Is Kevin Nelligan here? Lance?
Yeah.
You expect Kevin here?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, here he is. Right behind us.
I might have to share with you on some of these that are...
I don't... Put my face, Gil.
Do you want to sit?
I'll sit over here.
Okay.
I didn't hear from Andrew.
Put the boarder up.
Yeah.
No, that's, uh...
Chris.
No, what was her name? Christine.
Christine.
Yeah.
That was a long time ago, though.
Yeah. You're getting mixed up with Leanne, maybe? Who had to leave the board early?
Yeah.
You lump all the women together.
I'm just gonna go with what's in front of me.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, my microphone working?
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum, but we're waiting for a few minutes for one other member who has not indicated that she will not be here. So we'll just wait a couple of minutes and then we'll start. All right, it's approximately 7:03. I'd like to call the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission to order for the March 15th regular meeting. First thing is the attendance. Stephen Molinelli, Chair, present. Russell Davenport...
Present.
Jackie Mulvey, absent. Jeff Lippincott, absent. Mary Ann Marino...
Present.
Frank Oliveri...
Present.
And Gary Paganelli...
Present.
Present. And with us tonight will be Lance...
Hansen.
Hansen, our planner, town planner, and Kevin Nelligan, the attorney representing the town. I'd like to call the... Ask for approval of the minutes from the January 15th special meeting. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 18th, 2023 special meeting.
Okay, is there a second, Gary? Any changes to the minutes or anything? All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Thank you. Lance, did the tape running?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry I'm asking late, but...
Nope, that's okay.
All right, under agenda review? Any suggestions or input for agenda review? I'd like to put forth one. Looking at the length of and the density of the applications tonight before us, the possibility of public hearings and so forth, I'd like to note that, I'd like to suggest that we not begin anything after 10:00 PM tonight, because if we stick to the full agenda, I think we're going to be here until 11:30, 12 o'clock in all honesty. So I'm suggesting that we note for the agenda that we not begin anything after 10:00 PM. Is there any consideration to that?
Not, I think that's reasonable.
Do you want to schedule a special meeting for anything we missed?
Then we'll schedule a special meeting with limited to only the agenda items that we don't deal with tonight. Two dates that are possibilities are two weeks from now, March 19th, which is two weeks after this meeting...
You mean 29th?
March 29th, and/or April 5th, which is two weeks before the next meeting. Is there any preference?
I'd go on the 5th, I'm just gonna be away, I know.
Okay.
Yeah, the 29th I would prefer.
They're saying the 5th, they're not available on the 29th.
Oh.
You're retired, so you're like I am.
I'm not with the...
Gary, you good?
I'm fine.
All right, so then, no new business will begin after 10:00 PM tonight, and a special meeting will be on April 5th, which will be limited to only those agenda items that we do not deal with tonight. Nothing else will be added to that agenda.
Yeah.
Okay? Do I have a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Second?
To that effect.
Second.
Mary Ann? All those in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. First order of business is a public hearing, and there are none that I'm aware of for tonight. Next order of business is old business. The owner is Ledgbrook LLC. The applicant is Palm Coast Capital LLC. The location is New Hartford Road map 34, block 158, lot 001E-2. And the proposal is the construction of a new Tractor Supply Company retail store to impact approximately a half acre of 75-foot upland review area, and the construction of stormwater quality basements, parking area, and fenced outdoor display area. With this application, for those of you in the audience, there was a different kind of input from a concerned party regarding this application, where we were informed last month that there would be an intervenor, which gives... You know, rather than me explain what the intervenor's role or capacity would be, I'd like Kevin to please explain that to everybody.
Well, the intervenor really is a party to the action. They have a right to present evidence and respond to the applicant's application, which they've done. I think you've already made a determination that you've accepted the intervenor petition, right?
Yes, we did, like, two months ago.
Yeah, so they're a party similar to the applicant.
Okay.
But their evidence is limited to the statute 22819, which is addressing adverse impacts to natural resources, air, land, water.
Okay.
Particular to this application.
Okay.
So that's a burden to show to you that there is an unreasonable impact to those, one of those, or one or more of those natural resources.
Okay.
In relation to this application.
And if they exceed their rights, then you would intercept and let us know that as they're speaking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or the applicant's attorney will, but yeah.
Okay. All right, I think for purposes of trying to keep this some kind of an orderly meeting logistically for our benefit and for the benefit of the applicant and the intervenor, is I'd like to let the applicant speak first and present their modification to us again. I then would like to allow the intervenor to present their concerns regarding the application, and then, within reason, we'll allow an exchange back and forth within limits. And the next thing would be whether or not the commission would like to ask any questions of either/or. And at that point, we'll see where we are and move forward. So I'd like to call the representatives from the Palm Coast Capital LLC forward. Introduce yourselves, tell us your title and why you're here. Are you using the screen?
Yes.
For us, okay.
Yes. Give me one sec.
Go ahead, thank you, Phil.
Members of the commission, good evening. Members of the commission, good evening. My name is Jim Cassidy, I'm a professional engineer in principle with the firm of Halcy Pearson and Cassidy located in Cromwell, Connecticut. With me this evening is Matt Davison of Davison Environmental. He is our soil scientist for this project. In addition to, we have our legal counsel, Lou Wise, sitting off to my left. As was mentioned, we were before you earlier last year, at which time we presented an application for the development of a back portion of the property located at 200 New Hartford Road here in Winston. At that point, you had deemed the project insignificant, and we received approval for a regulated activity within the 75-foot upland review area from wetlands in Winston associated with this property. Since such time, we did have wetlands in Barkhamsted. We needed to go to Barkhamsted for activities within their 100-foot upland review area. During the process, we revisited the plans, and we came up with a way to reconfigure the site to remove any activities within the 100-foot regulated area from Barkhamsted. So we're here before you this evening requesting a modification to our prior application. I'll just go over a little, another overview of the site. As mentioned before, the site we're talking about in the screen outlined in yellow is about a 10.66 acre parcel, zone TG zone. Off on your right or to the north is Route 44, our New Hartford Road. It is located about 675 feet back from New Hartford Road. Along the bottom, you'll see an accessway.
Just before you continue, do you have a scroll where you can point to anything, if you can?
Let me try. I don't know if a pointer will work on your screen. Unfortunately, my pen for the tablet, it doesn't seem to be working tonight, so let me see if I can use this on it, if it'll work.
Good, thank you.
So again, the property outlined in yellow on this is the 10.66 acres. This is New Hartford Road off on the right or to the north. This is the north there up here, so north is to your right. The property is about 675 feet off of New Hartford Road. There is a strip of land that goes all the way out to New Hartford. The access to the site itself would not be through this strip. It will be through one of the existing access drives to the shopping center that's out front. Out front, you see the white building here. This is Stop &amp; Shop. There are some other retail and restaurant uses off to the north end of the building, and then there's a automotive repair facility off in the far north, and then some additional retail spaces in this area, for a total building area of about 115,000 square feet. And obviously, there's an associated park lot in front of that, and then there's the bank off on the far west side of the property. I should note that the Barkhamsted line is coincidental with our easterly boundary line here, the bottom. As was mentioned, we had Matt Davison go out and delineate the wetlands on this site and also enjoining properties. Matt will talk a little bit further about those as part of his presentation. Basically, he identified four areas. Area A is the area that's off to the east on the bottom, and then continues off on the southern portion of the property, this wooded area in here. Then he also has two other areas. Area B is a narrow band of wetlands. This one here?
Yeah, there you go.
Yep. So, Area B, I'm sorry. Yep, is a band of wetlands that is actually at the toe of an excavated rock slope. Then this one was D. Yep, so this is the area of an excavated channel that the water has been basically running in a northerly direction and collecting in. And again, I'll have Matt talk a little bit more about that. And then there's another area, that's an area actually along an access driveway, Area B down in this location here. The site itself has been previously graded and disturbed. The primary soil type in the area you see is cleared here, is the adorants. It presently consists of bare earth and some metal, slight metal growth. Basically, knowing the area, being, living in this general area, I know it's previously been used also as a, basically a track for radio-controlled cars. So if you look closely, you'll see a bunch of little tracks on the property. The topography of the site is kind of interesting in that you have the wetlands on the far south side of the property, but if you actually take a look at the elevations in this area here, the actual elevation is about 3, sorry, 733. It's actually sloping away from the wetlands in a northerly direction towards its parking lot, at a gentle to moderate grade. When it eventually hits the parking lot, it's down about elevation 727. So there's about six feet difference in elevation from the wetlands down to this parking lot. Stormwater management in the site, there's really nothing in the way on this piece of property right now. There's actually only two catch basins that collect some water off the meadow area and then put it into an existing drainage system that's on the shopping center, and eventually discharging to a stormwater basin out towards the front of the site. You'll see two lines on this property. The orange line that's running parallel to the wetlands is your 75-foot upland review line from the wetlands. The red line would be the 100-foot upland review line from the wetlands, that's in Barkhamsted, that's off on the east side of the property. The property is not located in a under flood zone, it's all above, in a flood zone. Sorry. As was mentioned, we were before you earlier this year, the plan before you is a site plan that you approved at that point. On this plan, we propose to build a 23,957-square-foot, single-story retail building. In addition to, off on the north end, or the, sorry, the west end of the building, there's a concrete pad that's used for an outside display area of about another 21,000 square feet, a concrete sidewalk along the front, and a concrete loading area out to the back. As I mentioned before, access to the site would be off the existing parking lot from the shopping center. There's one lane along the backside that services delivery vehicles that would come to this loading pad out back, and then another lane that would come back out, exit along the westerly side of the site out to that main access drive and all the way out to New Hartford Road or Route 44. There is a proposed garden center or greenhouse on this pad area. This is something new that Tractor Supply is doing. On this plan, there was a permanent trailer display area associated with it, too. Then, as I mentioned, there's a concrete walkout front. This is a permanent sidewalk display area. This plan did have activities within the 100-foot upland review area. There was the area down here that would be within the 100-foot upland review area from Barkhamsted, and then there was a large portion in the back here that was in the 75-foot upland review area in Winston. In total, with this prior application, we were looking at about 42,000 square feet of activity in the upland review area, but no direct impacts within the wetlands itself. Fast forward, as I mentioned, what we've done is we've gone back, we've modified the plan. What we've done is we've resituated the building further to the west along with the concrete display pad. We pulled the driveway along the west side over to Westerly 2, and then also redid our grading and our stormwater management system. Basically, you can see the red line here, so we pulled all activities out of the 100-foot upland review area from the wetlands in Barkhamsted. We also moved the building further forward, making a single row of parking rather than two-tier parking out front to allow us to pull our activities further away from the wetlands along the back portion of the property. And then we also reconfigured our stormwater management basins, just to give you an idea what's happened. The photo down below is the revised site plan. The outlines in red are the original site plan that you approved. So what's happened is the building itself, it shifted 70 feet to the west, and it's also shifted about 70 feet forward. And you can also see that the driveway along the back of it and then down this east side is also been pulled back from the wetlands on both cases.
Just before you continue, my summary of what you just said is that you've now moved away from the Barkhamsted wetlands, so that they're no longer a concern of yours, and you've moved further away from our wetlands to accommodate this commission?
Yes.
Is that a fair summary?
That's a fair summary.
Okay, go ahead, continue.
So this is a copy of our site utility plan. Again, the orange line is your regulated area, the red line is Barkhamsted's regulated area. I'm using this for, basically to explain how we designed stormwater management on this site. There's three main components that will happen. Again, if you take a look at the grades, the majority of this site presently drains from this elevation 733 down to the parking lot at 727. What I had to do is because on the original plan, our driveway had a bit of a cut as you were along this side of the wetlands, I wanted to raise the site a bit to get rid of that cut that was going on. So we incorporated an island between the existing parking lot and this parking lot. That actually allows me to raise the grade of the parking lot and then also this driveway. So now, this closest point to the wetlands, this driveway was actually sitting on the existing grade, and there's no cut involved in it. There will be some filling within the building and then along this driveway, but no filling that actually goes over the regulated area. Stormwater management, what we're proposing to do is three things. Again, we have this concrete display area. This pad is sloped at a 2% grade to the west. I have a bioretention swale along this entire side of the pad. So that bioretention swale will pick up the stormwater runoff from the pad. It will then convey it to a storm drainage system that's going to be constructed in this front parking lot and bring it to a point where it can connect into the existing drainage system that's in the shopping center plaza. In addition to, we originally, on the prior plan, we had a larger stormwater management basin out back. It was also deeper. We did go back out and do some additional soil testing, and we found groundwater down at elevation about three feet in that location. So what we decided to do is to redesign it. We raised it, but by raising it, we could not do a conventional drainage system to discharge to it with a series of catch basins and pipes to convey water to it. So we redesigned it in a way so this back driveway and loading area actually will sheet flow through a stone apron and then into a drainage swale that may convey into this basin. This will be a wet bottom basin, and Matt will talk a little bit more about this, but we are proposing to plant it with a series of wetless plugs and reestablish a wet area on that basin. There still will be an outlet structure. The outlet structure is designed to intubate any increases in flow. It will discharge through a pipe into this, and then we have an additional stormwater basin in this location here along this side of the building. That's very similar to what we had as part of the prior application. This basin was basically designed to pick up the overflow from this basin number two out back, and also all the roof leaders to the building. Once again, there will be an outlet structure on this that will intubate the flows out, convey it through a pipe, and then also connect with that existing drainage system along the front of the parking lot. And then what we're going to do is where we intersect that existing line, just past it, we're proposing to put a bore techniques or a gross particle separator on it to treat all the water from the front parking area. And that was something that we proposed as part of the last application also. That's going to happen here. So, you know, basically, it's going to be our treatment drain, you have a bioretention swale, a wet bottom basin here, and then another basin here. This basin is designed just to intubate flows. We did some soil testing in that area, and we found that groundwater was down about eight feet. When you take a look at the grades, you're going to find the grades only cut down about four feet. So we don't feel it's going to be a wet bottom basin in that area, and would not be able to support any wetless types planning. There was a lot of talk about, you know, trying to do different infiltration practices. One of the other things we did on this site since last time is we actually went back and we did those additional test bits, and as part of that, we did take samples from each area, and we sent that out to Whitestone, which is a testing laboratory that we use to get a, basically an infiltration test on, a falling head infiltration test. And what we did is we had one for the bioretention swale, one for basin number one, and one for basin number two. And these are what you call your, basically your permeability rates in that soil. What you'll see is they range from about .04 inches per hour to up to about .8, I think it was the high, .08, I'm sorry, inches per hour. That is very slow. That is not a high infiltration rate at all, so we did not rely on infiltration as part of this design at all. We've already gone over the basins. You know, again, this is basin number one, it's just going to be an excavated depression. It will have an outlet structure on it, this is a section through the basin. We will put a organic topsoil layer in the bottom. It is proposed to be planted with a, basically, a erosion, erosion C-mix, essentially is what you specified. And then we also are using a wildflower mix along the slopes of this basin. As I mentioned, this is basin number two, the back basin. This will be a wet bottom basin. This will have, similar, have an outlet structure. The difference on this one is on this plan, we have a series of wetlands plugs, they're going to be planted in the bottom of the basin. The only other thing I want to bring up is the, sorry, the bioretention swale, just so you can see in cross-section what it looks like. This area would be the concrete pad, the concrete display area. This would be the parking lot behind it. Basically, what we're going to do is we're going to build a small slope from that pad down into that bioretention swale. Because the soils are tight, and we're not going to get a lot of infiltration out of it, what we're actually proposing to do is excavate the area down an additional 30 inches. There'd be a pipe in the bottom of it that would be actually perforated, wrapped with a filter sock, then we're going to put a bioretention mix back in. We're also talking about putting some kind of liner on the bottom of that. So what will happen is as water comes into this, it will percolate through this bioretention mix and into this pipe, and then carry it out to the drainage system that we talked about out front. So with these revisions, as mentioned, what happens is our activity in the upland review area goes down. This is the revised plan. The area that I have highlighted in orange is the new activity in the upland review area. This area at this point consists of about 24,210 square feet of activity in the upland review area, and again, no direct impact to the wetlands. And also importantly to note is this area here, the drive has been raised, so there's no cutting along the edge of the wetlands. If you were to go out there and take a look at the wetlands, and I'm sure Matt will talk a little bit more about this, but it, actually what happens is this area looks like it started development at some time. There's a lot of fill that's pushed right up towards the toe of that rock slope, and the area beyond it, the wetlands is actually a little bit lower, the fill area in here. So that wetland is actually lower than my driveway grade. A couple of other things that are kind of important to note. As we went through files in town, this was one map that we were able to pull out of the file of this property. I apologize about the quality, but this is what we were able to get from the town. This was a proposal for the original development. Off to your right, you can see this building here, that's the shopping center that's built. This is New Hartford Road. There was a proposal at that point for an additional building for a total between the two. You were looking at about 200,000 square feet with a very large parking area to the front, but with this particular application, you actually had direct impact into the wetlands. So that's that wetlands area that we're looking at that we're up against in the back, and this is the wetlands area that's along that access drive, and that's the far southerly wetlands area on this site. If I...
Just a quick question. I see in the corner there, it looks like this was approved at one point?
Yeah. The way we found this is we actually went to DOT or to OSTA, Office of State Traffic Administration, to see what we needed to do, because we have additional vehicles and the overall threshold exceeds the requirements of an OSTA permit, so we thought we had to go for what we call an administrative decision for a modification, but come to find out, it was already been approved by OSTA for 200,000 square feet. So we don't even, we don't even need to deal with OSTA at this point. But that's how we tracked down this plan, then we searched the town records, then we found this as approved plan in the file.
And what year was that? So I can't see that.
That was 1993.
93.
Yeah, so I apologize, but I don't know if I'm having a network issue or you are. Here we go. So my purpose of this slide is I took our development red and just overlaid it to give you an idea of the difference between the two, so you can see that what we were proposing at this point doesn't even occupy the area of the parking lot. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Matt Davison. Want to bring up your slide?
Actually, I'll take one of the wetlands on it, and then I'll end it down.
Use the microphone, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. For the record, Matt Davison with Davison Environmental. I'm a professional soil scientist, professional wetland scientist, certified professional erosion and sediment control, and a Connecticut forester. I've been working as a natural resource professional in Connecticut for about 25 years. So as Jim stated, this site was leveled at one point in the past, so I delineated the site in March of 2022. I delineated four wetland areas that I gave letter designations to for simplicity. As Jim noted, the biggest wetland is Wetland A, which is largely off-site, but also but also to the southern, on the southern part of the site here. That wetlands, the, the, is not disturbed. So that's, you know, the only wetland on the site that hasn't been subject to disturbance. Wetland B is actually an old access road that's just intercepting groundwater. It's essentially a cut, so the groundwater bleeds out of it and it kind of just drains down. Wetland C, again, is just a cut on the rock face here. And Wetland D is another excavation that's just capturing groundwater. Overall, what I found on the site was that there really wasn't any topsoil left. That the site had been stripped down. And when I'm, I was digging holes, looking for wetlands, I was already sort of in the subsoil, almost to the parent material, as I was trying to find where the wetlands were. The two wetlands that are closest to development are C and D. And in my wetland impact assessment, I, I assigned wetland functions to these two wetlands because they're closest to the development. The wetland principal functions that I think are most important for these two wetlands are what I call water quality functions or the ability of the wetland to capture runoff from the surrounding landscape and treat that wa, that runoff. The wetlands provide these functions at a principal level because they are densely vegetated with emergent vegetation. They are depressional, they are low gradients. The water enters the wetlands and it kind of sits there and the plants do their job. I think one of the most important things, as Jim noted with respect to our development in relation to these wetlands, is our development is downgrading into the wetlands. So our development does not drain towards these wetlands. These wetlands are above our development. Equally as important is that the contributing drainage area or the area that essentially provides the hydrology for these wetlands is above these wetlands. And our development will not impact the, the hydrology or the contributing drainage area for these wetlands. It do not anticipate our development to impact the principal functions associated with these wetlands.
And that, the orange line to the west of Wetlands B, to the north of Wetlands B, that's the 75-foot setback.
Yep. That's the 75-foot setback.
And why are you delineating, delineating Wetlands A in Winston and Wet, and calling Wetlands A in Barkhamsted the same?
It's all part of the same system, essentially. This is all one contiguous larger off-site wetland system. It kind of pokes in and out like this. It's a, it's a large forested wetland. So I was, I, I assigned it the same letter designation because it's part of the same. It's hydraulically connected and similar characteristics. So, um, one of the things, if I could have my slide, Jim. Oh, let, uh, go, uh, let me, uh, one thing I did recommend in my wetland impacts assessment, I did recommend, and this was in the original application as well, that was approved, shrub plantings, buffer plantings around Wetland D here. I think I have, uh, about 100 shrub plantings that are going to be planted around this wetland here to enhance this buffer. And as Jim noted, in the stormwater basin, I did also recommend wetland plugs. We'd be planting, I think, 900 wetland plugs in that stormwater quality basin. And for the same reason that these wetlands provide water quality functions at a principal level, the wetland basin we're creating would be enhanced by also planting it with dense wetland vegetation. And it will essentially do the same thing. It'll actually enhance what's, what's here. It'll be picking up the runoff from the development and the, the wetland plugs will provide treatment for those. That's in my wetland impact assessment.
Just point to that swale.
Um, so Jim, do you want to go to the thing to show the basin? So those, those plugs would go in this basin and then the buffer shrub, the shrub plantings would go over here.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. There's been a lot of discussion about the potential impacts to Mallory Brook. So I wanted to sort of put that in perspective with, with a figure that I created here. So I created this figure here. Here's our proposed development right here. Our stormwater goes into an existing stormwater system and then it goes into this basin here. From this basin, the stormwater exits beneath the access drive here. This stormwater travels over 1,000 feet to get to Mallory Brook. So I have no concerns whatsoever that our stormwater will discharge from this basin and adversely impact Mallory Brook. Coincidentally, where Tractor Supply is located currently, Mallory Brook is also located on this site. In this location, Mallory Brook flows between Route 44 and the parking area. What's also interesting here is that the stormwater from this site receives zero treatment. The storm, when I provided pictures, there's a leak off here. The stormwater drains directly into Mallory Brook. And then these two locations are catch basins, which pick up stormwater from the entire parking area here and discharge it literally directly to Mallory Brook. That's the culvert outfalls. There is no buffer. It is a surface water discharge directly to the Brook. So certainly, from where it is now compared to what we are proposing, I think that it's safe to say that our development is far less impactful or that it would have no impact on Mallory Brook. Whereas what's going on over here now is without a doubt impacting, adversely impacting Mallory Brook. So I wanted to put that into context. I think that's an interesting thing here. So that's, that's sort of my presentation.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Louis. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Roger Nassau in Hartford. And I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant. I just wanted to say a few things about, about the matter that's before you tonight. As you have just heard and as you've been reminded, you, this commission approved the prior, should we call it the prior edition of, of this development. And you've now been presented with an amended version of it that is further from the wetlands and contains additional protections built into the plan that, that were not present before. Last time, you found that there was no significant impact. And having found that in, with, with respect to the prior application, it would seem that it would be almost an obvious conclusion to approve this version. This is a better version than the one you already approved and has fewer impacts than, than the last addition of this. However, it's not as simple in this matter because you have been presented with an environmental intervention under the environmental statutes of the state of Connecticut. And I just wanted to point out to you, before you hear from the intervenor, why you have been presented with this petition and, and, and why you have to sit here and listen to what you're going to hear. I wanted to make certain that everybody on this commission understands that the petition really has nothing to do with any bona fide environmental concerns. As is clearly indicated in the report that you received from the intervenor's engineer, and I, I, that was presented at the last meeting when they filed their petition. As is clearly indicated by that report, the, the, the person behind this is John Sinis, who is Tractor Supply's landlord in its existing location in Barkhamsted. And if you look at the, at the report, the first line of the report, the report is addressed to the chairman, to Mr. Molinelli. And at the very, the very first line of that report says, "At the request of Mr. John Sinis, I have reviewed the following documents for the above referenced project." So the request for this report, for this engineering report, was apparently, apparently came from Mr. Sinis. Not, not the, not the actual intervenor, Mr. Cantifer. And who is Mr. Sinis? I don't know whether, whether you're aware of it, but as I said, he is the landlord of Tractor Supply in Barkhamsted. And why is he doing this? Because he's extremely angry that he's losing this tenant. And he has been doing everything he can to try to either deny, get this application denied, or at least delayed. And as you listen to the intervenor's testimony and from their experts and everything, I just wanted everybody to understand where the motivation for this intervention, at least in our view, is, is, is coming from. And so with that, I guess we'll leave it up to the intervenor to, to present their petition.
Yep.
Got to ask a question. Since you brought up the landlord issue, who's the property owner of your property and the Stop and Shop property? The same landlord, you know?
No, no, no.
No.
No, no, no.
You have an agreement with them for access to your property?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those existing units over in the front portion of the property.
Yes.
My other question, the land, and I, the land where Mallory Brook is or the land to that, that area? Who owns that area again?
Mr. Cantifer.
Mr. Cantifer.
Other than, there's one piece out in the front, right out here.
Right.
That's the state of Connecticut Department of Forests.
Okay. So Mr. Cantifer is, is he part of the, he's the intervenor?
He's the named intervenor.
Right. Okay.
But as you can see from the report, the request for the report and presumably for the intervention itself came from Mr. Sinis.
So the intervenor is the property owner?
No, the, the intervenor happens to own land in Barkhamsted.
Right. Not your land, I'm sorry. Owns the Mallory Brook land, the land where a lot of these, where some of the wetlands are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, before we move on to the intervenor, is there anybody else from your two gentlemen who'd like to say anything or add anything? Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Just to be clear, the intervenor is in the Barkhamsted review area, not the Winston review area, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Under, see, under the, under the, the environmental intervention statute, anybody can intervene if they file a petition that meets, you know, the requirements of the statute. It's, it's not the same as if this were a zoning matter or a straightforward inland wetlands matter where you'd have to have standing and all that to, 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 to try to participate like this as a party.
Kevin, do you concur with what the gentleman just said? Okay. So we can proceed now.
Yes.
Your presentation is finished?
My purpose in telling you this is just so you understand what's going on.
All right, at this point, I'd like the intervenor or representatives from the intervenor to come forward. And I think we, we've acknowledged that you have a right to be here and intervene. So I don't want to spend time listening to why you're here because we know that.
Sure, absolutely.
Kevin agrees with that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So please just present evidence or, or expert testimony to tell us why you're intervening and why we shouldn't approve this, because that's your ultimate goal.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time. I'm, I just, as a point of order, it wasn't entirely clear, at least from my perspective at the last meeting, whether the petition was formally accepted by the commission. I think there was some question as to whether we were going to wait for more testimony before accepting it or whether it was accepted officially. So I just want to clarify for my own purposes whether the commission has formally accepted the petition is...
We accepted it.
I think we accepted it.
We accepted it.
I just don't recall a vote on the, I don't recall it.
I think, I think there was...
We accepted it.
Like, we were blindsided, to say it in any other way, of what, of your coming forward. And I think Michael, the former wetlands agent who has left the town, indicated that we really had no choice but to accept it.
Right, okay.
So we basically have.
Okay, sure.
And if you need to hear that, then we have accepted it.
Okay, I just, it was unclear to me. So thank you for clarifying for my part.
Can you say this?
Yeah, please, your name?
Yeah, sure, my apologies. Yep, my name is Joseph Mortalidi. I'm an attorney with Kramer &amp; Anderson, representing Mr. Cantifer, the intervenor in this matter.
Who are you representing?
Mr. Cantifer, Tom Cantifer.
We have a letter here saying that your firm represents Mr. Sinis.
No, that's Janet Brooks, who was the attorney for Mr. Sinis at the Barkhamsted level. So she sent me, it's...
Same firm, though.
No, different firm, no, no. There's a couple of details to clarify here. I'll try to explain all that in due course. Just to note, I have two experts with me today. I have Steve Trinkus, our engineer, who'll be speaking on the engineering plans, and I have David Law, our soil scientist. So you'll hear from both these gentlemen in a moment. But I want to clarify a few points procedurally. I know there's some confusion about who's involved here, who are, who's the intervenor, you know, the extent to which we have reports addressed to other individuals besides the intervenor. So I wanted to just get that all clarified for now. So the intervention petition was, was verified and signed by Tom Cantifer. He's the abutting landowner. He owns all those wetlands that have been, that have been marked in Mr. Cassidy's engineering plans.
You're saying the area...
Eight, not eight, not B, C, and D, just part of A.
Correct, correct, yes. Closer to Mallory Brook.
On the Barkhamsted side of that, that line.
Yep, that's correct. And even though some wetlands...
You just said all of the wetlands. So I just think for the record, we should clearly state which...
Yeah, the, the wetlands that are closer to Mallory Brook, so not, not the ones you identified.
Not within Winston?
Not within Winston, no. Now, that being said, the, the mere fact that the wetlands are not in Winchester entirely doesn't mean that the commission doesn't have jurisdiction over those wetlands. They have to consider all impacts to the wetlands that are, that are surrounding and affected by this property and by this development.
Right, but I think it's important to delineate that we're talking about Section A.
Yep.
Because Section A is even further from the site than B, C, and D.
Yep, and Mr. Trinkus will get into that, you know. You'll hear more testimony on that issue.
And just a point of clarification. One of the things I think I heard you say was that this commission is responsible for wetlands all over the place.
Well, not all over the place, but...
And we're, we're responsible for wetlands within the Winston, Winchester area and only that, as far as I'm aware. There are wetlands abutting our wetlands, which are in Barkhamsted. We can't make a jurisdictional decision on the Barkhamsted wetlands because that's the applicant's responsibility to go to Barkhamsted and get to see their approval. Okay? So from what I just heard from the applicant, they've moved away from Barkhamsted.
Right, right.
And now they will no longer need to seek out Barkhamsted approval.
Right.
So the, the decision rests with this commission to their project.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's our position that the proposed development will have adverse effects on both the Barkhamsted and the Winchester wetlands. So perhaps Mr. Trinkus and Mr. Law can provide a better explanation than this. You know, I largely advise them on the legal issues. But, but I think that through their testimony, you'll be able to understand what wetlands are impacted, be they Barkhamsted or Winchester. They're probably more qualified, you know, to itemize the wetlands at this juncture. But, but I do want to get to some points that were raised by Attorney Wise because I think there's some confusion here about who's really involved. So Mr. Cantifer is the intervening party per the petition, which we filed under 20219. In so doing, we have, my firm has retained Mr. Trinkus. We've retained Mr. Lord to come here and testify on the application itself. So even though the Trinkus report is specific to Mr. Sinis, we've adopted that report by virtue of our intervention petition. So even though it wasn't originally drafted from Mr. Cantifer, that information's been given to us through John Sinis' attorney. And we're using that, we're using that report because it's equally relevant, whether it's from Mr. Sinis or from Mr. Cantifer. So again, Mr. Cantifer's interest is not in the alleged disputes or disagreements between Mr. Sinis and what's happening here in this development site. He's concerned by his wetlands and whether, whether this development, sorry, dry my... He's concerned with whether this development is going to adversely affect the wetlands that he owns. So I want to be clear for the record. Yes, the reports in part referenced Mr. Sinis, but we've adopted them. We're using them because they're equally relevant to us as they are to Mr. Sinis. You'll also see, I'm going to give you some documents tonight. Mr. Law's report is addressed to me. And I've retained Mr. Law through, through my firm, sorry, through my firm to speak on what happens with these, with this application, all of it to the wetlands.
Before you proceed, Jim, I have a question.
Sure.
Why wasn't anybody that you're representing, okay? Why didn't anybody come forward with the original application that was approved several months back? At that point, why didn't anybody come forward?
Yeah, that's a fair question, Mr. Chairman. So at the time, Mr. Cantifer wasn't really aware of the intervention process. He had not reached out to my office. Had he come to me ahead of time and expressed his interest or his concern with the original approval or the original application, we would have, we would have in due course filed a petition and we would have been in front of you at the first filing, rather than coming in at the second, at the second filing. So that's, it's a fair...
But you weren't at the first filing either.
No.
Yeah, no, no, only Mr. Canifer was, either, either he watched remotely or he was in person, I'm not sure whether he came or watched remotely, but he learned of the development, he didn't consult me or anyone that I know of until after the approval was given, I think it was given either the first or the second night, I don't recall when the first approval was made.
It wouldn't have been the first night.
It was probably the second night, I would think. So he wasn't, he didn't understand the intervention process. My firm has a fair amount of intervention work, we represent developers as well, so he, that's why he didn't approach you guys originally, that's why he's coming in now relative to the modification.
Kevin, I just, before we go on, I just want to, legally, is, I, I think I feel like, I'd like you to be satisfied legally with an explanation of the relationship between Mr. Sinise and Mr. Canifer, given that a lot of, the two documents that have been presented to us have been addressed to Mr. Sinise, but that this is being brought by Mr. Canifer. And there is, since there is a relationship between Mr. Sinise and Tractor Supply, I just want to make sure legally that you're satisfied with this explanation.
Well, it's your decision, but it just goes, I think the applicant's just pointing this out as far as what's the motivation, he's claiming it's not environmental, he's a front man for the upset landlord, that's what the applicant's saying, and what you're hearing from the intervenor is, no, we just basically bought the report that the landlord had paid for and we're gonna use the same report because it's relevant, so.
But they must have discovered that their, Mr. Sinise had these reports through some sort of contact.
I guess it's kind of irrelevant, it's just really, you know, you should go ahead and hear what the intervenor has to say on the merits of the application, the issue of his connection with the landlord, that's for you to weigh or not weigh as far as why are they really here.
Okay.
Whether you believe in the applicant's position or the intervenor's position, that might go toward flagrating what you might think is going on here, but ultimately, you should base your decision on what the experts are telling you, each expert, weighing each expert as to whether it's reasonably made, unreasonably harmed the natural resources, which is the standard.
Right, that's helpful, thanks, Kevin.
And again, we, there's been some testimony about who's upset with who, but quite frankly, we don't have any, there's allegations, there's claims, there's notions that this is some sort of John Sinise.
Why don't we just move ahead with this?
But I don't think that should be tainting the commission's opinion.
Why do you think this, you're gonna hurt the wetlands?
Yeah, right, I just wanted to address the point that this is some, we're some sort of front, we have legitimate bona fide claims that will be brought through our experts.
What are you doing, you know, as an intervenor, we have to respect that position?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Why don't we just move ahead?
Sure.
With the expert testimony?
Sure.
So that you can tell us why the intervenor is upset or not in full belief of the documentation and the expert testimony that we've received and heard?
Yep, yep, yep.
And then we'll move on.
Yeah, I'll get to them momentarily, I would just, one other point I would just add, so there was some testimony from the applicants about the 1993 approval that was given, I don't think that should have any bearing on the merits of this application, that was a thirty years, that was thirty years ago, technology has changed, the site was never developed in the first place, so I think if the commission wants to put any weight into that 1993 approval, I really think it has little weight, given the fact that we're thirty years in the future and there's been quite a lot of updates since then. I would also mention that even though there's some testimony about the adverse effects on Mallory Brook relative to the existing Tractor Supply site, that's not what's before the commission to do, it's before the commission is how the proposed site affects the wetlands and Mallory Brook as an, as a adjacent water course. So I don't think we should be focusing on how bad it is across town in Barkhamsted, we should be focusing on what's happening here at this site. So with that, with that, I'll turn it over to Steve Trinkus, our engineer, to speak more on the application.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, if it's okay, I'll pass around Mr. Law's report and Mr. Trinkus's report for the commission and for the applicant to.
Is this, is this something that we haven't seen yet?
Do you have Mr. Trinkus's report? We don't have Mr. Law's report, so I have that, I have that here.
Is there any reason why we didn't have it prior to this meeting?
Well, I've received the report recently, today, and the, another point from the applicant's perspective is there was considerable discussion last meeting about whether a third-party reviewer should get involved, given the competing evidence that's gonna be submitted tonight. So if that's the town's interest, then I think we have plenty of time to look at the board report, the applicants can respond either today or at the next meeting with their criticisms and comments on it, and the commission will have time to look at it as well, because if this is gonna go to a third-party, third-party review.
I think you're predetermining the wishes of the commission where we may or may not go to a third-party.
Okay.
And for you to present or bring into evidence now, when this has been going on for two months, is sort of negligent, lack of a better word on your part?
All right, well, I mean, the commission can take what it wants from this submission, I would submit that it's seriously considered.
Okay, well, accepted, but I'm just saying, you know, you're presumptuous to assume that we're going to go to an independent review, and you're taking away the brains and the integrity and the ability of the commission to decipher and understand both parties.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we take away from the integrity of the commission, but it's up to you as to how you want to weigh the evidence that we submit, so I'll, I'll present it to you, I'll give it to the applicant, you can decide what to do. You know, Mr. Law can give you the aerial, you know, the thirty thousand foot view of what his report contains, and you can either listen to him testify or you can.
We're gonna listen to Kevin.
So, yeah, so that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let me give you.
Leave, leave.
Six.
Nine peepies.
Nine, okay, all right.
All right, for the record?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Stephen Trinkus, I'm a licensed professional engineer from Southbury, Connecticut. I have, I've been licensed since 1988, but I've been in the field of land development since the late seventies when I was working part-time for a surveyor engineer during college. I was initially asked to review the site plan here by Mr. Sinise when there was an application pending in Barkhamsted. And, and basically, a lot of the design has not changed except now to be moved farther from the Barkhamsted line, but the issues that were raised in the original letter are still valid with regard to wetland impacts. The current plans have now shifted the development to the west, away from the Barkhamsted wetlands, but right now that site is draining overland flow towards the Barkhamsted wetlands. The plan as proposed is gonna intercept all the water from the building, driveways, et cetera, the storage yard, and now direct it out through Stop &amp; Shop to Route 44 and ultimately to Mallory Brook. However, you're now reducing the drainage area, which is going as overland flow to the wetlands. That will cause a change in the hydro period within the wetlands because you're gonna have less water going into that system over time. I have a lot of technical comments, I'm gonna hit kind of the bigger, you know, picture ones. In 2004, DEP came out with a stormwater quality manual, it is a guidance document, that's a deep language. However, in order to address water quality, any of the practices in there must have certain components if you want to claim the water quality benefit of each of the practices. None of the practices proposed here, the two ponds or the quote-unquote infiltration bio-swell, which is on the west side of the storage yard, meet the standards in the manual. So you can't claim water quality benefit as far as that goes.
Could you just hold on for a minute? Would you ask your soil scientist to come back in, only because if, if there's gonna be a conversation about this, I'd like him present for the meeting? Thank you. If you want to, you need time to use the bathroom or anything?
No, I'm good.
You sure?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, that's fine, thank you. It's stated in the stormwater report that the prac, the design uses low-impact development practices. I'm an expert in lid and the short answer is it does not. This design relies on conventional structural practices to attempt to address water quality. The quote-unquote infiltration basin or bio-retention swale is underlaid by an impermeable layer. Bio-retention or infiltration basins are an infiltration practice. When you put an impermeable layer of clay underneath it, you have no infiltration. So that's, you know, complete contradiction to the intent of lid. They propose a soil media mix, this is one of the mixes that is extremely outdated, it's one of the earliest ones from Maryland in the mid-nineties, it has been demonstrated to fail repeatedly, and yet if you Google it online, it'll probably come up as one of the first hits on Google, because everything on the internet is pretty much forever. But the media, because of the amount of topsoil in it, has too high of a clay content and will basically fail because the clay content clogs the soil. The runoff is gonna be directed to a level spreader, but the plans don't, it states it's gonna be directed to one, but there is no level spreader on the plan, so either the report's wrong or the plans are wrong. It's proposed to use two-foot catch basins with hooded outlets to, you know, reduce or improve water quality. Professional literature has demonstrated that two-foot sumps with a hooded outlet to trap oils and floatables will only reduce total suspended solids about five percent. So it's not very significant, it's a very small reduction. It's also stated that runoff is all gonna go to this bio-retention swale, except when you look at the plans, the only portion of the site that goes there is the outdoor storage area on the west side of the building, not the entire site. None of, the two bigger basins that are proposed more, I guess, on the south and the east side of the building, they don't meet any of the criteria in the DEP manual. In my report, when you look at page three, three and four, there's three different types of wetland practices, these are taken right out of the DEP manual. All of them have to have a forebay. A forebay is a depressional storage area below the nominal bottom of the basin, so basically if the bottom of the basin is the tabletop, the forebay would be the floor. And the idea is that the forebay, which contains ten percent of the water quality volume, will trap sediment in it so it doesn't get out to the rest of the basin, that's the intent. Neither of these basins have it, this is not an optional item, this is a required item for any of the stormwater practices in the manual. They also have a length-to-width ratio, at least two to one, ideally three to one, because the idea is if I have an inlet where I'm sitting and the outlet is right there, but the basin goes this way, the way the table is, that water goes in here, right out that way. You want the water coming in the long end and going out the long end, because the water, the idea of a forebay being four to six foot deep is, it's a pool of water, that depth. New water comes in, the sediment has settled out in the bottom, so new water coming in over here doesn't stir up the sediment, it pushes the clean water out at that end. That's the purpose of a forebay. As the basins don't have any of them, sediment is gonna go right into the bottoms of the basins and pretty much kill the wetland plugs that they planned to plant in there. And the sediment will clog that soil surface and prevent the germination, particularly of wetland seed mixes, and therefore you wind up with basically a muddy basin, as far as that goes. You know, they claim that these are stormwater wetlands, well, if you look on page four, there's two types of wetlands, there's an extended detention shallow wetlands, which has high and low marsh areas, it has a flow path, you'll see a forebay and a micropool. A micropool is similar to a forebay, it can be a six to eight foot hole, basically a ponded area within the basin. A pond wetland system on the bottom of page four, again, it has high and low marsh, but you have to have all these components in order to address water quality. So what is the concern about addressing water quality? Well, you know, as all the towns in the state are now subject to the MS4 permit by Connecticut DEP, which comes out of EPA on the federal level, you know, projects must address water quality so that the town is in compliance with the MS4 requirements, which is to address water quality of new development and/or redevelopment of sites. We're trying to improve the water going out to various places. So the water quality is not being addressed by the design on the Tractor Supply site, it's being then directly conveyed to the drainage system through Stop &amp; Shop out to the big swale that's right in front of Stop &amp; Shop through, I believe it's a sixty-inch pipe there, that then goes east and then right into Mallory Brook. Contrary to the applicant's statement earlier, flowing water in a stream is not providing any treatment, all it is doing is diluting the pollutants, they're not disappearing, they're not getting treated, they're just being carried further downstream. So whether it's a hundred feet in Mallory Brook or a thousand feet, it's not being treated by flowing in a brook. The way you have to treat it is before you get to this point. Now that drainage system in front of Stop &amp; Shop, I have not seen a record map, but if that's within the DOT right-of-way, water quality has to be addressed to get a DOT permit, and you are directing water now through Stop &amp; Shop that doesn't go there today. They also require, having dealt with DEP in many cases, even when we have provided zero increase on a given site and yet we're connecting to a DOT system, you have to analyze the DOT system uphill of where you're tying in to the, basically, top of the hill to the outlet point to prove that their system can handle the flow. Even though you may be providing zero, they still require that type of analysis. In this particular case, right now, that's water from Tractor Supply doesn't go out to Route 44, it goes east to the Barkhamsted wetlands. So there is no runoff from this site going out to Route 44 at this time. The, it's Stop &amp; Shop goes out, but the site of Tractor Supply does not. So starting with zero, you know, a pre-development peak rate from the Tractor Supply place and then saying you're reducing it and we're gonna discharge it out to DOT is not really providing zero, because there's no water going out there. So effectively, to meet the peak rate requirements of DOT, you have to have no, really no flow going out to Route 44, you would have to infiltrate it all on the site, and that's not feasible, we have no data to support that the soils, you know, could infiltrate the water. In any of these wetland basins, whether it's a wet pond or constructed wetland, the bottom of the basin has to be at or below seasonal groundwater to maintain the hydro period to grow wetland plants. You know, if you try to put a wet basin in an upland area with no groundwater, you know, guess what, the wetland plants simply do not grow. So these basins all, there's all these requirements in DEP manual, and the applicant has not, you know, met them. There's other, you know, technical aspects within the stormwater report, but one of the, a couple of things that I picked up is there's also the groundwater recharge volume, this is a volume under the DEP manual that is designed to maintain pre-development infiltration rates. Right now, that site is vacant, it is most likely bare soil, maybe some weeds on it. So some rainfall probably does infiltrate, and the idea of the groundwater recharge volume is after development, you put that same amount of water back into the ground to maintain groundwater levels. That has not been, the calc, the groundwater recharge volume has not been provided, thus that standard has not been met by the applicant. Several of the, both the two bigger basins have a notch or of the, of the weir of the bottom, the invert of the outlet structure above the bottom of the basin, so between that outlet and the bottom of the basin here, this storage volume is always full of water, you can't consider that available storage because it's already there. So they're under, they're overestimating the available water, water storage within that particular basin as far as that goes. Looking at the site plans, it is standard practice in all the towns I've ever worked in, which is most of them in Connecticut, from here to Greenwich and all the way out to Killingley and places on the eastern side of the state. The record map is signed by the soil scientist, so that the commission knows that what's shown on that map represents what the soil scientist did, that information has not been provided. The mapping of the existing system on Stop &amp; Shop is not showing the entire system, if you're connecting to it, you have to analyze that system to make sure it has the capacity to add the water that you want to go into it. Stop &amp; Shop is pretty much a hundred percent impervious cover, I'm not, I haven't been in there in years, but I'm not even sure the islands are grassed within the parking lot, but pretty much it's a sea of pavement or building roof on Stop &amp; Shop as far as that goes. The driveway now on the southwest corner of the site for Tractor Supply is cutting into the embankment that is right below the wetlands on the Winchester side. And what's happened, when you cut into a bank, water is gonna bleed out of that bank, so instead of the wetland water staying within the wetland corridor, that cut bank is gonna become the path of least resistance for the flow, so you're gonna start having water bleeding out of that wetlands instead of following the wetland corridor, which it currently does. That clearly, again, reduces, you know, the wetness of that wetland because water's gonna drain out of it over time. So that's clearly an adverse impact because it's changing the hydrology of the wetland On the erosion side, on sheet six, they, they show a stockpile in their legend, but I found no stockpile on the plan. The, again, they talk about this infiltration basin, but there's no maintenance requirements for it, but it's not an infiltration basin, if it's underlaid by an impermeable barrier, it's not an infiltration practice period, as far as that goes. They use a generic detail from the Connecticut DEP 2002 Guidelines for Soil Erosion for a diversion swale and check dams. These swales have to be sized to carry, I believe, the ten-year storm event, and you have to design it to handle, you know, your flows. A generic detail is not necessary. A generic detail is not necessarily what is required. You've got to provide a detail along the lines of the generic one, but it's got to be sized with calculations, you know, to meet the DEP requirement. Again, there's, you know, issues with some of the planting notes. You know, I do call out the bioretention soil media, because the clay content will be greater. So, you know, what's really going to happen to this site? Well, you're diverting the flows from the site now out to Route 44, so the downgrading wetlands, which are in Bark Hampstead, will see less water than they currently see. That's clearly changing the hydrology of that wetland. The cut into the corner with the driveway is going to allow de-watering of the upgrading wetland, which again, is also going to adversely affect that. Because the stormwater management system does not adequately address the pollutant loads from a site like this, those are going to be quickly conveyed out through Stop &amp; Shop to Mallory Brook, and you're going to adversely affect the water quality there. I don't disagree with the applicant, that Stop &amp; Shop and the site Mr. Sinis owns down the road, you know, are probably not the best examples for addressing water quality, but you can probably look in 169 towns and find exactly that. That's why there, the DEP has came out with this manual in the early 2000s, was to get applicants to start addressing this, so we don't do the same old stuff day after day. And that's the intent of the manual, is to improve the water quality of the runoff. And if the site down the road came in for redevelopment, it would have to meet the higher standards in the DEP manual as redevelopment. So you couldn't allow these catch basins to have direct discharges. But there will be adverse impacts to the wetlands, because the inadequacy of the stormwater management system to, A, adequately treat the runoff and reduce the pollutant loads, and you're also going to have increased runoff volumes, which will be discharged ultimately to that feeder stream of Mallory Brook. Now, you know, runoff, you know, a lot of design is relative to peak rate attenuation. If you have 10 CFS now and you have 100 later, you build a pond and you let it out at 10. However, you still have a very large bathtub of water. What happens with runoff volume and receiving streams, for a given rainfall event, if you had one-inch rain, as an example, maybe Mallory Brook flows one foot deep and flows that way for 24 hours after the rainstorm. When you don't reduce the runoff volume, what happens, it flows at that one-foot depth, but now it flows for 48, 72 hours, depending on the impervious cover. The stream does not like that extended duration of flow. So what it starts doing is eroding the underneath side of the banks. That material goes into the bottom of the stream, gets carried downstream and deposited somewhere else, but then the banks cave in and the stream channel gets enlarged. It basically erodes, because it is trying to find its hydrologic equilibrium. So runoff volume, without any other issue, is a problem, because it adversely affects the streams themselves by changing the stream channel morphology. And if eroded sediment in one place becomes a deposit somewhere else. And particularly in, you know, in streams that may have native fish populations, the gravel substrate is where your benthic organisms, your bottom of the food chain live. Well, if you cover that with, you know, a quarter inch of silt, you know, you're impacting the bottom of the food chain, and therefore, you affect the higher level, you know, aquatic species. So at this point, I'll turn it over to David Lord to-
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sure.
Since you spoke for the last half hour-
Speak up, Frank. Speak up.
Okay. Question. The current property across Route 144, I'm sorry, on Route 44 where tractor trailer is now-
Yes.
That drainage system has just strictly catch basins directly into the creek, correct?
Basically, few times I was in it subway years ago-
So they're in violation also?
Well, existing sites, yes, they are technically in violation. So if it comes in for redevelopment, they would have to meet the higher standards.
Because this was done before 2000?
That site-
They were built before 2000? You said the wetlands laws changed during the early 2000s?
Well, the DEP manual came out in 2004. It was a draft in 2002. It came out there, they're in the process. I think they have a draft-
So it was basically built before that?
Yeah, it was built before there were rules.
Now, the outlet for the current Stop &amp; Shop parking lot?
That goes, there was that big open swale-
And where is that outlet to?
That outlet's to the stream that goes behind the commuter lot and then to Mallory Brook.
By pipe or by overland?
I believe it's, I, there's a short pipe under the driveway. I think it's a 60-inch diameter. A number of years ago, Sean Hayden-
Because I see nothing on this wetland map that shows any connection between that and Mallory Creek?
Yeah, no, there is, the pipe out of the Stop &amp; Shop under the driveway-
Right, I understand about the pipe, but I mean now for the water to get to Mallory Creek, I don't see any-
It, it's an unnamed water course. It goes behind the commuter lot and then down to the east to Mallory Brook. A number of years ago, Sean Hayden, when he was at the Conservation District in Torrington, had me look at that. We actually, he was approaching DOT about actually doing a retrofit of the stream below the commuter lot before I got to Mallory Brook, to try and address the runoff from the commuter lot, because that was just a leak off at the corner of the parking lot and it eroded right down the fill embankment into the stream. It's an unnamed water course, I believe, but then it does go into Mallory Brook.
It doesn't show up on anybody's maps.
It, well, it wouldn't show up on USGS. It's probably too small to show up on that.
But all these other little dots show up.
Well, Mallory Brook would, but other-
No, no, I don't mean Mallory Brook, what, what the area we're talking for development now. There are five little, what we consider wetlands, in this massive property.
Well, those were flagged by a soil scientist. That's why they're showing up.
But the one, the most important one, the outlet, nobody sees.
Yeah, pretty much, because it's not on the applicant's property.
Pretty interesting.
Before we go, I have a question.
Sure.
You presented a lot of testimony, which, in my eyes, showed the shortcomings of the applicant's proposal and the deficiencies of it.
Well, yes, yes, that's accurate, that's accurate. My, my job, when I am either hired by a municipality or by, you know, a concerned citizen, is to review the plans and, and provide testimony as to what works and what doesn't work. I don't, whether you build it or not, that's not my call, that's your job.
But that's, that's where you're going.
Yes.
So the question I have of you is if the applicant were to take everything you presented and addressed every issue and satisfied every issue, then you would go away? Yes or no?
I guess in theory, yes.
Okay. I just wanted that to be clear. Okay, so that's, in my mind, that could be a solution.
If they can address all the water quality and the runoff volume issues and not-
And then the ultimate decision would be whether or not it's addressed to our satisfaction.
That would be correct.
You become irrelevant.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like that term, but in theory, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. You, you had somebody, anybody else here?
If you'd let me go home, I'd take it instead of irrelevant.
I'll feel you, we go up again. Anybody else? Lance, anything?
I had a question. So at some point, would you be able, upon their, I guess, request, or maybe even this commission, to provide, you know, the exact bullet points of what needs to be changed with their current system? Like, we've, we've got a bunch of, you know, they presented a bunch of stormwater management practices here and whatnot, but would there be a list that could be generated of, of these six, six things that you feel, or whatever, maybe there are 20? Would, would they protect the, the wetlands in such a way that would, you would agree that, hey, this is fine, because the wetlands are not going to be negatively impacted?
All the points really are in the letter of what doesn't work. In looking at the plans as currently proposed, I'm not sure you could change the design of the basins to address all of these. You've got to maintain the flow to the downgrading wetlands. You've got to prevent the flow from being intercepted in the corner of the driveway where you're cutting the slope. I think you'd have to probably scale the project down to some degree to make the stormwater work.
Okay.
That's the summary.
Good. Gary, anything?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from your, from the intervenant's behalf, on the intervenant's behalf?
We have Mr. Lord, but it seems like there's a side comment here.
I'm sorry, say it again?
We have Mr. Lord, but he's obviously having some sort of a sidebar here, so we need to figure out what that's about.
Well, we need to re-rail that into the scope of this meeting, if that's what's occurring.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is David Lord. I'm a professional soil scientist and environmental consultant. My company is Soil Resource Consultants. I have an office in Meriden, Connecticut. You have been handed out what I'm going to be presenting this evening. My intention was to talk the points, yes, was going to be to present the verbal, the information that I'm going to, in a verbal form, and use the report in the written form for the record. That's one of the reasons why you're getting it tonight, as, instead of getting it ahead of time. By way of introduction, let me back up. I have a undergraduate degree in natural environmental systems, a master's degree in soil science. I've spent eight years with the USDA Soil Conservation Service in both Illinois and in Connecticut. The last job there, I ran the SCS office in New Haven County. I've been in the field of soils and environmental science for approximately 46 years now, 35 of those in private practice as a consultant with my company. You'll see some of the projects I've worked on over the years and whatever. Just, again, I haven't appeared before this commission in quite some time, if ever, although I have done a lot of work flagging wetlands in Winchester. So anyway, to begin, what I would like to do, does the commission have access to a site plan drawing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going through it again?
I want to utilize one site plan drawing for explanation purposes, to let the commission follow my thinking through.
Do you have one available to put on an easel to demonstrate what you're saying?
No, I did not bring a drawing. And the conversation with the applicant was to request and see if we could use one of their drawings that was shown earlier, so that I could just point the way of my thought processes. But that is not available, according to the applicant's attorney.
So that's not, they're not cooperating?
I'm not, I don't have access to that. What I can do is if you will turn to sheet SD1 in your application-
Of what they submitted.
Of what they submitted, I can take you through the salient points of my review.
Give us a moment.
Sure. And if I can, this is, I'll just talk loud enough to make sure that where we're all looking at the same drawing.
This drawing or this one?
Or we're going to look at the other drawing, correct? Like what we've just sent?
Yes. SD1 is farther back in the applica- in the package.
So this is-
You don't have, that's a lot of new, Michael.
We have 16, 17, that's it?
It's in a different drawing, sir.
What is, does she have it, or she'd have it?
Yeah, I have it.
Is that it?
That's the drawing. And I can also hold up this visual to take you through.
Well, we're not going to see that from what we're used to.
Let's go, let's get it going.
Let me proceed, I will-
All right, let's see, let's see if we can accommodate you.
If you have specific questions, please feel free during my presentation-
Can we do this in 10 minutes?
I can try.
Thank you.
Again, by way of referring to earlier questions or statements that were made, contrary to some of those, the project itself has not moved itself farther away from wetlands associated with this project. I want the commission to understand and be clear with that. The wetlands that have been moved farther away from are along the common boundary between the eastern side of the project site and the adjacent property in Bark Hampstead. Those are the only wetlands that were actually moved farther away from. By moving the site further to the west, the project as currently proposed actually moves wetlands closer, excuse me, moves the project site closer to wetlands in Winchester. The wetlands referred to, I believe, as Area C and D are now much closer than the earlier alternative that was proposed and I believe was approved by this commission. I was brought in to look at the project, basically with the focus from Bark Hampstead's part, point of view, because you had already made a decision on the application. So my review and my earlier reports that you may see attached to my current report refer to a different person and to a different iteration of the proposal. Those were looking at the application of the project site at an earlier time before the Bark Hampstead Wetland Commission. So I just want the commission to understand that. Also, a point of clarification, the wetlands that are referred to as a portion of A on the eastern side of the project site have a section, or actually have two sections at their upper tip that are in Winston. It's right on the site plan drawing. So those areas that I'm referring to have a beginning, if you will, in Winchester. So it's not only off-site wetlands to the east, there are parts that are directly in there. And that's the point where I will now make my first point, and that is the proposed alteration of what I feel is groundwater hydrology with the project. You will see in the application package and drawings, a number of 10 soil borings. They extend from the western side of the site through the site to the eastern side of the site. Those soil borings show water surface elevations in the soil borings that begin in the western side of the site, from elevations three feet below ground level to seven feet below ground level. As you move further easterly and to the eastern edge of the proposed development pad, those elevations to water within the ground surf, within the ground itself, move from 10 feet to 15 feet below existing-
Before you continue, we're at a disadvantage to what you're talking about.
I understand that, and I apologize.
Well, wait a minute. Groundwater moves uphill under pressure, so don't tell me that the groundwater is moving only one direction. Groundwater can move in-
Capillary action can move water upward under pressure. What I am explaining to you here and presenting is a groundwater gradient across this site.
That's at any site we have a groundwater gradient?
Absolutely.
So that means you can't develop any property in the state of Connecticut?
No, it does not.
In the town of Winston?
No, it does not. That's not what I'm saying.
Frank, hold on, let's-
That's what I am saying.
Let's just go one step at a time.
The soil boring locations are indicated like this, with a small circle with dots, and ultimately, they go down here. This is-
Oh yeah, I see him.
Water at seven feet, water at three feet, water at 10 feet, and two have water at 15 feet.
Can I draw a picture on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm not trying to be difficult about using the computer. The applicant-
It's their responsibility, not yours.
Well, I'm just trying to help.
Okay.
Helpful to the commission here? Okay. The applicant was supposed to be here tonight. He's from out of state. Presley yesterday's weather, his flight is canceled. He's in here now. I have my commission, use the computer, I will, I will. If it makes it easier for Mr. Lord to demonstrate what he's talking about, I brought easel, I have a board, you're more than welcome to it. Use the maps of the commission.
Okay. Is by any chance that drawing over there? If I can, can I borrow the drawing that you're using there that's headed before you, so the entire commission can see it?
Which one are we guessing?
It's SD1.
It's SD1.
The original one?
Do you have it, do you have-
Let's, let's-
Do you have a drawing that shows the entire site?
Mr. Lord, Lord, give us, let's take a five-minute break. Let's try to get the logistics, shut the tape off. Let's try to get the logistics of what you're trying to propose to us so that we can see it and understand it, and then we'll resume the meeting. So, tape is off, do what you need to do.
If I could find one more, it would be more than sufficient.
Okay. That was the original.
Right.
SD1.
Yes.
This one.
Should be what we need.
He's ready to go. Sorry.
I have to do the foundation.
Downwater is empty.
All right, you want to turn the tape back on? Please begin your presentation. You wouldn't have, oops, you wouldn't have a pointer that when you-
Yes, I do.
Good, thank you. All right, just for the tape, we're back on, on, on tape testimony, and Mr. Lord is presenting a, a report on the project as part of the intervenor's expert testimony.
The main point that I was making in my report is the potential for the exist, the, what I feel are proposed negative impacts to the wetlands which extend onto the site from Winston into Winston and also extend onto Bark Hampstead from the alteration of hydrology within the project site limits itself. You have elevations of water three feet below existing soil surface, sorry, seven feet, excuse me, at this point, three feet at this point, it drops down to ten to fifteen feet below this point. The ledge is not an issue on this site, but the depth of fill below the existing surface elevation is what I feel critical. The depth of fill in this area is much thicker. The elevation of the water in test pit number eight is approximately two feet lower in elevation than the wetland that is, in its largest extent, a portion of wetland area A. It is my belief that the wetlands that extend onto portions of Winston, the town of Winston, and extend onto Bark Hampstead are fed by base flow hydrology from under the site.
Okay.
And to answer the commi, the other, the commissioner's comment before, yes, such a feature happens under practically every site unless you're on plain bedrock and nothing else. However, there are design components that you can either transfer that hydrology or at least mitigate that lack of hydrology. The critical factor there is that this water that I'm talking about is providing base flow hydrology to two areas of wetland along the eastern side of the project site. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you-
No, no.
That's the potential for impact. That has the potential because all of this site is collected from imp, from impervious surfaces, put into storm drainage system, runs to this point on the site and then runs along the existing development out to the highway and into that detention basin that you've already represented. That water which falls on this site, and in some cases it may be very close to the existing wetlands, soaks into the ground and flows very slowly through the soil column and ultimately daylights in these portions of wetland along the eastern side of the development site.
So those wetlands, just to correct, those wetlands you were just pointing out is what we're saying, no, you're saying those are below the, those are low, at lower elevation than the, than the park, in a sense, the building in the parking lot?
Oh, yes.
If the water would-
Absolutely.
Because I, I mean, I've been this, I don't remember, honestly, I've been this site several times, obviously before the snow, more in the fall, but I, I don't recall the elevations being as such.
Well, you can see the elevations-
I'm not sure if you can verify that with anybody else.
You can see the elevations on the drawings.
Okay, so-
There is a noticeable gradient along the eastern side of the site.
But the site, all the drainage from the site is going into the drainage system, the wetlands, the two wetlands, and then out to, none of it is permeating through the ground?
Yes, it is.
Where?
Because there is water accumulated from the soil borings taken on here-
Yeah, but the building's above that. There's nothing from the building site or the site plan that's going to go into groundwater.
Correct, but that water has a source. This area collects water and however slight the infiltration capacity-
Then you wouldn't, then you wouldn't allow any development anywhere in this country.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying the, that there is technology available-
Yeah.
To mitigate that compensing.
You know what it is? You can do what Norfolk is doing, pumping groundwater for the rest of their lives now to the, because of the, the truck accident.
Yes, Frank, let him, let him continue with his presentation and then we'll ask questions. But please proceed, I'm sorry. We'll get back to you, Frank.
The site is proposed to be collected through various means, the biofiltration system, surface water runoff, a stormwater detention basin here and here, collected by pipe and taken out. That component of the water, a portion of which, and I have not made any determination, feeds these wetlands. Wetlands in mother nature do not terminate in the configuration that these wetlands do. They are relatively flatterated and they come up to and terminate at the toe of an existing fill slope. That wetland, in all likelihood, historically either connected to the wetlands further to the south or at least extended further into the site. There was collection and discharge of groundwater to these wetlands, which is still there today. What I'm saying is that there is an opportunity to, in some manner, preserve that groundwater hydrology component to those wetland systems and minimize the amount of adverse impact to their characteristics and functioning if we continue to require some of this groundwater flow component to feed those wetland systems. They will reduce, minimize, potentially eliminate any adverse impacts to either vegetation, soil, microbiology, and other components of the, of the wetland if those practices are allowed to be incorporated into the plan.
You're saying basically to pump so that the water, that groundwater, I, I, I do see the subtlety of what you're saying, it's certainly not lost in the idea.
Yes, and I'm not talking about any kind of mechanical means, pumping or anything else.
Right.
These, there are practices that enhance infiltration of surface water after it's pretreated or take clean water and infiltrate it into the ground to preserve that subsurface flow and hydrology feed to the wetlands to eliminate the potential, reduce the potential for impact to the wetlands.
Would there be a further study that would be necess, that you could determine the impact, now that you're moving all this, in a sense, you're taking away the, the water that used to come into this, into this site because it's developed? Now, even though we're truck, was we're trucking all that water off essentially? Now, are, you're saying that that water that's trucked off, now some of that should be allowed to go back into the ground so that it can feed the wetlands behind it essentially? Is that somewhat accurate in layman's terms?
Yes.
Yes, and that's what the-
My, my sense also is I think at this point, you're limiting your comments to the wetlands A on Winston's property and wetlands A on the Bark Hampstead line property. You haven't addressed B, C, and D at all.
Other than the fact that the proposed relocation of the development pad now moves development activities closer to wetland areas C and D.
But you're not telling us the impact of that move.
Proximity.
That's it?
You're moving human activity, construction activity during its construction and long-term operation, and now instead of the road being below the wetland as it was in an earlier configuration, the road is now the same, roughly the same elevation. What that entails is you have the potential for movement of material, debris, blank papers and other materials that will move off of the paved surfaces and potentially move into the wetland system. So it's a different type of human activity impact that is now much closer to these wetlands than they were earlier in the, in the evolution of this project.
Okay.
There, again, there are mitigation, compensation measures that can work to minimize that, but I think it's important because the commission heard that we've moved the project farther away from the wetlands. These wetlands, yes, but the wetlands C and D, no, you're actually closer now with this application. The only way to do a complete remove them-
Scale down.
Is scaled down so that you preserve what is there along the eastern side and you increase the separation distance along the western side of the, the development pad, increasing. You have an opportunity because of the way the wetlands are configured on the site, that drainage actually flows away from those wetlands, so we have some benefits that can be worked out, but again, in its present configuration, the project is closer to the wetland system.
Is it your belief, because really I see what we're talking about here is ground, we're not talking about anything on the surface, we're really talking about groundwater hydrology, how this development affects groundwater hydrology that would affect our wetlands, right? I mean, that's, that's what we're saying.
Yes, that's one, that's one of the components, parts that I'm talking about.
Is it your belief that by putting this development there, it would destroy, that the, the wetlands that exist now would be deprived of so much water, even though it's groundwater hydrology, that would be deprived of so much groundwater that it would essentially destroy those wetlands? Is that, is that the, your, your belief with it?
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility.
If you could put a, if you could put a number on that possibility?
Yeah, scale.
I can at this point without much further-
For, it would have to be further-
As, as someone who's looking at the project-
Yeah.
And not the right of access to the site, I cannot do any determinations, studies or investigations.
But that's something that the other engineers may be able to weigh in on.
That's something to be applied to.
It can be done.
It can, well, it certainly can be done. You can, in a manner, determine the characteristics of the wetland from the vegetation, depth of water, surface content, and other biological factors. You can determine what the necessary biological factor, hydrology factor is, and then determine that a means to create that and to preserve that to the best of the bill. We've got a lot of area over here on the site, which is east of the development pad, that could be used for that purpose.
And, and my, my concern is everything that you've testified through tonight is contained in your report.
It's described, not in as great a detail as I've talked about tonight, but it's in the report.
Okay.
Then the next point that I want to talk about is the biofiltration basin. You've heard some testimony regarding that. It's really not an infiltration mechanism unless that medium from the surface down to the pipe functions properly. They have to be precise in its configuration. There is limited to no protection of the filtration per, swale that I've seen from the impervious surfaces for the prevention of particulate matter, coarse grain materials moving to the infiltration basin and flogging the soil medium of that basin. That's an element of concern because again, this is one of the primary treatment measures from a quali, water quality standpoint that are proposed. I agree with Mr. Trinkus, that is currently proposed, the stormwater quality, well, they described as stormwater quality basins lack the standard features, sediment bore bay, the vegetated middle section, the micro pool near the discharge point. Those features which are fairly standard from a water quality standpoint, fairly standard to almost required for new development projects are not possible with this particular configuration because of the basin location and its proximity to the water table. You've got to balance the two features. You can't go too deep because there's, you're intersecting the water table, and then you're not doing any good from a water quality standpoint. You've already heard that. Well, the, the last point, from a, from a design standpoint that I'll talk about is the impact of piping all of the water, which is sort of an adjunct to what I've described already, but the piping of this water into a basin that I believe was initially installed, at least I've seen some records of it, back in the eighties, and the five-foot diameter pipe that goes under one of the access lanes, it's not really a detention basin. There's no treatment whatsoever.
Is what you're referring to, is that the existing stormwater basin adjacent to forty-four?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what, what we're discussing.
So it's a concern when we're taking a greater volume of water from this development site that, you've already heard my feelings on the level of water quality treatment, you've also heard from Mr. Trinkus, the level of water quality treatment that he feels is here, and dumping all of that water into a major flow pattern that ultimately gets to Mallory Brook. That's another concern from a wetlands perspective.
Okay.
And lastly, I'll just conclude, conclude with what I say on page three. I feel this is a project proposal that rises to a level of significant activity. It has the potential for significant impact to wetland resources that are both onsite in that area of the narrow band of wetland A that extends into Winchester and other resources that are primarily outside- and other resources that are primarily outside the one-hundred-foot upland review zone or your seventy-five-foot upland review zone. But as I'm assured, as I am sure, the commission is well aware, that is only a guideline. You have the ability and the responsibility to look at all activities that ultimately flow to a wetland for potential for adverse impact. That is not a magic line that if you stay seventy-six feet away from a wetland, you don't have to worry about it. Your responsibility goes to the wetland and the protection of the wetlands. The seventy-five-foot upland review zone is a review zone. When projects come in with activities in that zone, they have to come to you. But you can exert your jurisdiction farther away than that.
Absolutely.
In addition to the rising of, of the level of significant activity, I'll just throw my comment in as far as the third-party review or the, the use of a third-party review. It's done all the time. I do most of my work on the applicant's side of the table proposing development activities, and it's not at all uncommon that the commission requests a third-party review.
No, we, we often do that.
You often, then you're familiar with the...
We're very familiar with that.
Many commissions, they're not, they don't understand that the commission hires the consultant and the applicant pays the fee.
The applicant or the applicant handing it to Vida.
You're out of my bailiwick as far as that. I don't know.
Thank you. Anything else to add?
And so that, I would just say, please keep an open mind towards that because you have two somewhat conflicting opinions on the current proposed level of design.
And both opinions come from expert witnesses and expert testimony.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we respect both.
Very good.
Okay. May I have my...
Do you have any questions?
My drawing back.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, Kevin, um, is there any protocols to proceed from your end or can we just...
No, I think the applicant would have, that we brought over.
I had that down also. So they, they have the right to come back and challenge or question? Is it going to be a conversation back and forth and back and forth?
Shouldn't be. It really should be applicant to the board.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure. For the record, reintroduce yourselves so that, uh, some continuity with the tape.
Again, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional engineer and principal at the firm of House, Pearson and Cassidy. Sitting to my right is Matt Davison of Davison Environmental. Can you give me one second and I'll bring the screen back up?
Thank you.
Thanks, for the record, Matt Davison, professional soil scientist, professional wetland scientist, again, for the record. I want to address the, the comments about impacts of groundwater contributions to wetland A. And I, I don't agree with, with that at all, and I'll explain why. It belies the facts that we presented to you. Jim presented to you the infiltration data from the soil testing, and the infiltration rates on the site are virtually, they're, they're minuscule. They're very, very low. So when we talk about soil types, you know, where you get high infiltration and where you get high groundwater inputs to wetlands, these are typically in glacial outwash, dry soils, sand and gravel. This site is comprised of what soil scientists might call tight soils. So it, there's a very high silk component. So the water that falls in the site, and Mr. Trinkus said it as well, there's no infiltration on the site. So the water that falls in the site is not feeding the groundwater at a, at a high rate. It's, it's not a major contribution to wetland A. Having flagged the boundary of wetland A, I saw no evidence of groundwater discharge. What is probably one of the bigger contributions from our site to the off-site wetland is actually a leak-off from wetland, if you can get up the, so I have to show this. There's, most of the water that falls in the site sits in those wetlands. Those wetlands are surface water wetlands because the soils are tight. The water's not infiltrated. It just sits in those areas. And then from those areas, it runs off.
Like a sheet?
Yeah.
Is essentially a sheet?
Essentially, yeah. There, there's very little infiltration on this site. I mean, you can see it when you go out there after a rain. If you, if you're out there and you look at wetland D, there's a leak-off on wetland D, um, right here.
D or D?
D, right here. There's a leak-off here. I think it's even in my report. It, it drains right down the hill here and goes right down into this wetland. Aside from that, this wetland's a large wetland. The contributing drainage area extends all over the place over here. What you're talking about here again, when you have infiltration rates as low as what Jim demonstrated to you, and again, this goes back to some of the difficulties that with treating the stormwater here. You can't use infiltration because it's not infiltrating into the groundwater. I'm sure there's some, but it is not a major component to the groundwater, to the hydrology of this wetland down here.
Just real quick, what is the grade, what is the percentage grade from this area? Like this area in here where this building's going to be that slopes towards that wetland? What, what are we really talking about as far as, you know, say even the center of this to where proposed groundwater being fed by this?
So if you...
With sheet drains, like how much of a slope is in there?
If you really look at the topography out here, I mean, when you look at it in the field, it's deceiving. I was deceived, but when we shot the topography on it, field shot topography, even on the, the topo map that, or the, the aerial photo that Matt had demonstrated showed contours on it, the elevation here is about seven thirty-three. The elevation at the parking lot, seven twenty-seven. There's actually about six feet difference in elevation. It's pitching in a northerly direction. Just off the edge of the parking lot here, there's a little bit of a low spot if you were to...
So you're saying it's sloping up?
No, it's sloping to the north, sloping away from the, yeah, if I'm coming from a parking lot. It does not slope to the west.
Okay, sorry, because I, I have been to the site, so like I said, again, several times. So, and, and what you're saying somewhat makes sense to me.
If you actually go out there in this area here, just off the site, there are two catch basins. The water slopes in this northerly direction to these basins and then eventually into this drainage system on this, on the shopping center property. So there is a very large portion of the site that presently drains to those existing catch basins. And as Matt had mentioned, and I tried to demonstrate with the permeability tests we had done, there's not a lot of infiltration here, believe me. I've done twelve tracts of supplies in Connecticut, another eight out of state between New Hampshire, New York, Long Island, Rhode Island. Anytime I can implement infiltration practices, I will, if it's practical. This was one site I didn't think was practical. I personally did not think was practical. Um, so that's why I don't have...
Practical or the necessity for it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it, you should have seen it, it's digging testments out here. It was like digging through concrete. The soil's so, so tight, so hard. It's film, film material throughout this site. I'm all for infiltration where, where it'll work. I'm not for spending my client's money if it's something I don't think is going to appropriately work. And when you go out there, especially now, now that you get snowmelt, you can see the water running off this, again, it's a very gradual grade down into this low area and actually getting in, into those catch basins at this point.
Yeah, I'll just add that the, the, the leak-off that exists today will not be altered either. So this will, this will continue to drain this way, and this wetland here is picking up water from up above. So this will be unaffected, and if there was one area where I actually saw, visibly saw contributions from our site to this wetland, it was right here. Again, I didn't, this, this slope over here is armored, but I did not see any groundwater breakout over here, no evidence that there's infiltration and then groundwater breakout at the total slope. If this was an outwash-type soil, if this is stratified sand and gravel, you probably would see that. It would already be infiltrated and the groundwater would, would break out of the total slope and feed the wetland. This, this site is not a, as well as hydrology.
Okay.
So the other things I would like to add, I'm not going to rebut everything. You heard a lot tonight. First of all, Mr. Lord made reference to that there are borings in this location here where groundwater was down to seven feet. There's a boring here where this groundwater is about three feet. And then as you come further and further to this northeast quarter, the groundwater elevation actually changes. As we went through and we moved this building to the west, as I mentioned, we lifted it, okay? In, in that, at this whole drive aisle here, along the whole backside, it's now at or above grade. So we're no longer cutting down the degree. We did that intentionally, so we weren't intercepting groundwater. In addition to, as I mentioned part of my presentation, I changed the whole design of this basin in that it initially was a deeper basin. I had groundwater at three feet. I said the raised basin. Also got rid of the conventional drainage system, which could intercept groundwater. Went with the drainage swale, so everything sheet flows off, off of this and into that swale and into this basin. Mr. Trinkus has provided significant information. He did provide a report, a few things. You know, I appreciate, I appreciate the report and I appreciate all the recommendations.
Do you mind just moving the mic a little closer? That's okay.
Uh, I appreciate the report and I appreciate all the recommendations. The first thing that I will point out is the date of the report was December sixteenth. December sixteenth was the date of the report that was provided to us from Mr. Trinkus. The application that was filed with you was dated December twenty-ninth, with a planned date of December twenty-eighth. There's several recommendations in here that have already been incorporated in the plan. I incorporated, per the DEP Stormwater Quality Manual, to my best knowledge and beliefs and practices, I incorporated everything I thought I could possibly do and still have a viable development on this site. When you look at the, at the introduction section of the guideline, and as Mr. Trinkus has stated, it does definitely reference that it's, it's a guideline, it's, it's not a mandate, and it's a tool that we use to augment the design of stormwater measures. Again, believe me, I've done twelve of them in Connecticut, and anytime I can implement any of the measures that are in within the manual, I do. Unfortunately, it doesn't work for all particular sites. I've been doing it for thirty-five years. I've been in the business for thirty-five years. I've done all kinds of development from residential to commercial to, to schools, hotels, all kinds of things. I always try to implement whatever I can. I will go back through his comments again and see if there's anything else I can implement. But I would highly suggest, again, the plans were submitted on December twenty-ninth. I don't know if there was any additional review since such time. But I think it would be appropriate to have a more updated report based on plans that actually were submitted as part of this application. The basin that we talked about upfront, it is not in a right-of-way. It is on private property. It's discharging to a basin that's actually on private property. I'll be quite honest, it would've been nice to, we do have a hundred-foot area here now. It would've been nice to be able to offer some additional measures. Unfortunately, we saw last time, we went forward with an application to the adjoining town. On the initial presentation, the application was deemed insignificant. Second time back, there was a change of tune. That's when we decided to modify our plans. So we, we modified it to pull everything a hundred feet out, and therefore this is what the application that you have today. There was reference to that we're actually getting closer to the wetlands. I will agree that this wetlands area C, with the revised plan, if you look at it from the prior, I am closer to C. The wetlands we were close to with the prior application was this wetlands area here, which we are significantly further away from at this point.
Could you flag on that again?
Wetlands D.
This is wetland C up here?
Yeah.
So when we moved to the west, I got closer to C. This wetlands area...
But you're saying you got further from D.
I got further from D, significantly further from D.
Can we just go back real quick to speak to a little bit more about this existing? We, you made the clarification of this stormwater area that we're, that it's not on DOT property.
Correct.
So that was one of the point, questions I had. The second was, can you explain a little bit of the flow rates or how that's calculated to what's there that's existing, right? So we're pumping, not pumping, we're, we're bringing some additional water after it goes through any of your systems here to that retention pond. What is the, I mean, how do we determine, okay, what is the condition of that? Or can that handle the additional flow?
So we, as part of the revised application, we did model that, that area. Number one, as was mentioned by the, the intervenor, it's not really a detention basin. It's got a sixty-inch pipe out of it. There is some kind of a structure on it. It seems more like a trash grate when you take a look at the outlet. It's really not doing much in the way of detention. So that's why we modeled, we tried to make sure that our development, we matched the flows going into that system for post-development conditions before it got to this basin. Based upon, we, we did a model where we basically included all the contributing areas. There's areas off to the west, my pointer's going to die, I'm sorry. To the west of forty-four, all the way from the top of the hill on the west there also. So we did a model including all those areas, and based upon the model, we demonstrated that we're not seeing an increase in peak flows. You heard that we're changing the volumes, as Matt has mentioned or has testified and I have brought up. If you take a look at the infiltration rates of the soil, there's not a lot of infiltration going on. Most of the water on the site is running off. You might get some, if I, you know, if I could do some infiltration practice and it would be legit, I, I would. But on this particular site, I, I'm really not seeing that.
You treated most of the water, your, your basic premise was to take care of most of the water and sense on your own before you relied on bringing in some overflow over to the front. I'm just trying to clarify this in my mind and to anybody else.
And, yeah, so again, you know, I'll do everything I can with the stormwater manual. I'll implement anything I can to make the site work for the prospective tenant. Again, the last site I did was tracts of supply in Litchfield. If anyone wants an example of measures that we, we put in as part of a, a recent development. I look at neighboring developments that have been recently built. The one that's most recent would be the O'Reilly Automotive directly across the street and the Dollar General. That's in the town of Barkhamsted. If you look at the basin that's associated with that, it takes a, basically a series of catch basins in the parking lot, discharges it to a rectangular basin. As Mr. Trinkus is mentioning, you typically want to come in on the, the longer end. You want the, the flow to have a longer period of time to drain across it. And that particular basin actually kind of short-circuits. It comes in on the narrow side and goes back out on the narrow side. So it's not something that's uncommon. It's a practice that, that was, you know, provided in that particular property. The big difference in that one is it discharges directly to Mallory Brook. We're significantly farther away from Mallory Brook. But again, the, the manual provides us a toolbox. We tried to implement any measure we possibly can within that toolbox. And I feel on, on this particular site, I've implemented everything I possibly can to make a site that still works, respective tenant on this site.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anything else?
I think that...
Introduce yourself again, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, just Lou Ives, Lou Ives attorney for the applicant. I think that what you have now heard should convince you that there will be no serious or significant impacts to water courses or to the wetlands. And we think it would be appropriate tonight to make two findings. One would be that the intervenor, the, the, the intervenor under the, uh, well, the intervenor's petition and the intervenor's evidence has not proven, because it's their burden to prove that there, that this development will unreasonably cause harm to a protected resource. They haven't quantified any harm. They've talked about the possibility of harm and failure to abide by or, or to follow certain manual, not even requirements, recommendations, but they haven't quantified anything and they, and they haven't proven with actual evidence that this development is going to harm any protected resource. And so we would ask that you make a finding to that effect and that you dismiss the intervention petition on its merits. And secondly, we think that what you've heard from our experts should convince you that there is no significant, will be no significant impact to wetlands or water courses. And, and because of that, we ask that you make, that, that you allow the permit, that you grant the permit, grant, grant the application. We don't see the need to go any further, and I just hope that you'll do that. We don't see the need to go any further, and I just hope that you'll do that.
Kevin? Any input?
Now, at this point, unless you're moving on to defer from everybody, now you're gonna move on to what?
No.
The decision you might make?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so you have to, you have to make two findings, before you go to your normal criteria and your regulations on any application, you have to make a finding regarding the intervention, and that is whether, in essence, whether you're gonna make a finding that there's no unreasonable impairment to the, to the natural resource at issue here, the wetlands. And then, so the full standard, I'll read it, because it's a little confusing, reasonably likely, you have the time, that it's reasonably likely to unreasonably adversely affect public trust in the water or natural resources. So really, what you're saying is, will this application have an unreasonable impairment on the, not, you don't have to find that there's no impairment, but it's not, it's an unreasonable impairment. If you find it's not an unreasonable impairment to the wetlands, then you should dismiss the intervention. Okay? So it's all reasonable, it's not absolute, because there are no absolutes. Let me read that again?
Yes, please, actually.
Alright. The activity resulting from an approval is not reasonably likely, is reasonably likely to unreasonably adversely affect the water and natural resources.
So my sense is, what you're saying is if the applicant has provided us with due diligence to all of the concerns that we may have, and we agree that they have, then unless the intervenor has proven beyond a reasonable doubt that they haven't-
No, I wouldn't use those kind of standards, but it's just, is there an unreasonable impairment to a natural resource?
Unreasonable impairment.
Is it unre, not, no impairment, you don't have to find that.
It could be some impairment.
Unreasonable, unreasonable impairment.
Okay.
To, in this case, the wetlands.
Would it behoove us to explore the possibility of having an independent third party look at both sides of the presentation and give us guidance that's reasonable, if we shall choose?
Yeah, you've done it before, it's really, oh, how comfortable you need to be, if you think you've heard enough, then you can go right to that decision, again, a two-part decision, unreasonable impairment or not, and then your regular, you know, significant impact, that, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And your regulations.
Any, any kind of comments regarding either or?
I, I've heard enough on both sides.
Okay.
Make a decision tonight.
Okay. Gary?
That's her point.
Enough? So what you're saying to me is that there's no need for an independent third party to review this?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if everybody else agrees?
Agree? Russ?
You know, I've really kept, tried to keep an open mind to everything that was put in front of me, and I, I would have to really stick to what we originally approved, and this is a modification of that, that's sort of an improvement on that, so I, I don't see the necessity for a third party review of this.
Okay.
We didn't see it before, so.
Okay, so we're gonna dismiss the concept of bringing in a third party?
Correct.
And then, let me just see where we are on our agenda, if I can find it.
Why don't we make the decision then?
Do you guys have a question about the agenda?
No, no, I, what is the actual language of this?
We're on the, we're on the old business, and we're asking, or they're asking for a modification of application twenty-two dash thirty-two, which now becomes twenty-two forty-nine, and the proposal is to construct a new tractor supply retail store to impact point five-six-one acres of seventy-five-foot upland review area for construction of stormwater quality basin, parking area and fenced outdoor display area. That's what we're gonna vote on.
Right, and the, but the actual process that was brought up by the state, by Izzy, and called it impair-
Intervener.
Intervener, I just wanna get that language correct.
So they have the same right as the applicant, and we've extended them that right, to my knowledge, Kevin?
Yes.
We haven't cut them short, or we've heard everything they had need to say, and we can, based on what the commissioner's saying, no need to ask for a third party oversight in terms of a recommendation, so we can now move ahead and approve the application or deny the application, based on its merit?
Yeah.
Well, we have to decide what to do with the intervenor first.
And with that said-
I don't think so.
Yeah, that's what I said we had to do.
We have to dismiss the interviewer.
I can make a motion.
Kevin, before we vote, do we have to make a, a motion to dismiss the intervenor?
If we decide.
Is there an unreasonable impairment to the natural resource?
So that would be a motion to that effect?
Right.
That would be the first-
I move there is no unreasonable impairment to the natural resource at issue, or I move there is.
Okay, I think the, the sense of the commissioner is there is not.
Yes.
But that has to be voted on.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, just provide us with the specific language of the motion.
Yeah, I would move, you would, I move that pertaining to the intervenor's application, that there is no unreasonable impairment to the natural issue, natural resource under the application.
Okay, I'll use that language as my motion. Is there a second to that motion, Frank? Is there any discussion on that motion?
No, I'll second it, or he's saying, I'm sorry, okay.
Is there any discussion?
Well, no, I mean, there isn't any more of an unreasonable effect than we've seen in many, many other projects, yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. So the unanimous, the motion unanimously cast. Now, the next motion should be-
Your regular motion to approve the application.
Move ahead to approve or disapprove.
Right, under your standards and your-
Okay, is there anybody who wants to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve application, or modification of IWWC twenty-two dash thirty-two to IWWC twenty-two forty-nine, of the owner of Ledgebook LLC, the applicant, Palm Coast Capital LLC, New Hartford Road Map Thirty-four Block One Fifty-eight, you know the rest, for the construction of a new tractor supply store with only an impact of point five-six-one acres of the seventy-five-foot upland review area for construction of stormwater quality basin, parking area and fenced display area.
Okay, is there a second to that motion, Gary? Any discussion on the motion?
I, I feel like I've, we've really gone through an extensive discussion about this, and I think most of our needs have been, been met, that it's just not, I just don't see the impact negatively to our wetlands with this.
Okay.
I think some great points were brought up, I don't mean to dismiss anybody, I, I definitely do, but I, I'm gonna stick with what we've decided on before, and what, what I've seen there in the field, and the testimony of everybody involved here.
Alright, do we have to discuss conditions before we vote, or vote for approval and then put the conditions?
I think you would put the conditions on first.
Okay.
If there were any additional from our-
Yeah, are we gonna just carry over the, would we just carry over the conditions from the last application?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and is there a bond that's-
There was a bond on it.
Was part of the application, do we need to change that bond? So conditions one through twelve or thirteen would be, remain in place, the bond would remain in place, and there were no additional conditions, correct?
Uh, number thirteen condition was for the cleanout of catch basins, and number fourteen was for the bond.
Okay, so that's still included?
It was a maintenance plan, yeah.
Maintenance plan, yep.
Alright, all those in favor of approval, raise your hands. Alright, it's approved unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you for the intervenors, thank you on our behalf for your input, and we respect your, your authority, but-
Thanks to the members of the public for your patience.
Okay, so this is the interview. Okay, the next item on the agenda, and for those, for those individuals who are in the audience, and who may not have been here from the beginning of the meeting, we agreed that we, we will not start any new business after ten PM, and it's nine-twenty, so don't look at that clock.
I've just got something to say.
Just, hang on one second, I just wanna, I'll give you a chance, I just wanna be sure that everybody is aware of that, so depending upon where you are on the agenda, and you get a sense of what's going on, you can sit through it, but we're not gonna begin a new item after ten PM.
But we are gonna schedule a special-
And we will hold a special meeting on April fifth to conclude the agenda, go ahead.
And I understand that's fine, I, I've had a leaking roof for six months over the course of the entire winter, and I need this, this commission's permission to fix my roof, and I would really like to get it so that I don't have to have a leaking roof on my house, and that would be really nice if we could get this taken care of today, because I already took time off of my work.
Where are you on, where's your agenda?
Number five.
On the new business?
No, no, it's, it's a house, that's fitting to-
Wait, wait, what's your name, just give me your name.
Charles Coros, Charles Coros Moore near.
Oh.
F.
Number five.
Number five.
F.
Is there an agent, we need to get the agent to determine if you can be done with this?
I'll be quite honest, I'm not really sure why I'm here.
Hang on, hang on.
Because my house was built in nineteen sixty, and I'm just trying to fix it.
No, we respect it, let's, just give us a minute to look into this, we understand your situation here.
Look, I've been dealing with this for the past, like, two years.
But you, but you haven't come before us until two months ago.
Because I had to go, go get a mortgage, that cost money, I had to work to get that home.
I'm gonna respect all of the, what, your end of it, but just-
My end of it is I want a place to live that's safe, that's it, that's all I want, and you guys are literally depriving me of this.
I don't think, no, I, I understand, there's a lot of legality you have to go through with this, and I'm sorry, but I, I, it's certainly not the intent to deprive anybody of certainly a dry house. You know, this is usually outside the scope of somewhat of what we deal with for-
I just wish you four hours of my time for you guys to listen to me.
No, we're, we make it through this, I, well, I was willing to work, honestly, I feel that I was willing to work to try to resolve this.
Well, you're not being real people, because you guys have obviously never had a real job, we have to get dirty, we have to get-
Excuse me? Do you know anything about me, I'm sorry?
You guys are like, let's just-
You accuse me of not working?
I gave you the cur, I gave you the courtesy of listening to you, please, please end your conversation.
Actually, I did.
Item B.
Been in construction my whole life.
Russ, Russ, Russ.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm just-
Item B, wetlands, application twenty-two dash, twenty-three dash one, East Coast Alliance Dogs Incorporated, the applicant is Alan Borgesi, my understanding is that he sent a letter to the commission-
Correct.
-indicating that he'd like to postpone this, this application until the April meeting?
April nineteenth, yep, for the public hearing.
Okay, question, do we wanna put him, because we're not gonna finish tonight, do we wanna put him-
Yes.
-as part of the special meeting on April fifth, or leave it for the April nineteenth meeting, which is his request?
Yes, I would probably recommend leaving it for the nineteenth.
Okay, so then we will not entertain it on, on the, okay. April nineteenth meeting, not special. Meeting on April, sorry, fifth, thank you. Okay, the next thing is a, a public hearing that was scheduled for application twenty-three dash two, and my understanding is the applicant, Maureen Pizzano, is she here? Okay, but has requested that we move that to the April nineteenth meeting, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to move that to the April nineteenth, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Alright.
Unanimous? Uh, the next application is application D, the owner is Scott Bosh, Boshand, and the location is Tariford Street, and it's the creation of a reupon erection of a structure and fence. Mr. Boshand?
We have an application.
For the record, identify yourself and talk to us about it.
Scott Boshand? I know what you would expect me to tell you.
Do we have an application?
You have an application, yeah. Tell us what you wanna do.
It's been done. The pond is, the pond is done.
With a permit or without a permit?
Well, I dug it without a permit, I have a permit to dig the front pond out, two ponds in the front, that pond is out back on the sixty-five acres, which was not in wetlands, and Army Corps came out and didn't have a problem with it, it's been dug for four years, but when your new wetlands guy came on board, he wanted me to fill out an application for it, because the building we put out there to have cookouts is closer to the pond than he calls wetlands now, I guess you could call it wetlands now, it's full of water. And the building is, I don't know, we brought prints and I spent money on surveys and to show you how close it was to the pond, I hope you have them.
For it, just to be clear, we do have an application for this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so I was gonna say, yes.
Twenty through three?
I think the, I think the drawings are-
Just give me a minute to look for something.
I don't know where the fence came from, he's got a fence on there too, I wanted to put up a fence, so Mike might have put it on there, because it's gonna run offside the driveway where there's wetlands, where I have a permit to clean that pond up. We've done one, we're waiting to do the other, I'm waiting for DEP to come out because we have a pollution problem.
What I'm, what I looked for and I found is, for some reason, and Lance, you may be able to help us on this one, for some reason, it's listed on the old business, but the last meeting that was conducted was on January eighteenth, and I'm looking at my-
Of what year?
Pardon?
Of this year.
Of this year, January eighteen, two thousand twenty-three, and at that point, you were not listed as a new applicant.
We don't remember you coming before us before.
So-
Well, it's been years since I was here for the applications for the two front ponds.
But that doesn't put you on the old business, it puts you on the new business as a new application.
I don't know, I felt it out with Mike.
Maybe he considered it a modification of the old-
It's not, it's not listed. Lance, can you clarify this for us? Maybe I'm, I'm raising something that doesn't exist, but-
So you say it's old business?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at my agenda for tonight. It's listed as old business, which means somewhere in the past, we've accepted your application, spoken to you about it, and-
Yeah, I got, I got applications.
When?
Oh, it's been years.
Yeah, I remember years ago you were being here, but-
But again, this is a new application you're putting in.
Well, he, Mike brought this, when he came on board, he approached me or called me, fill out an application for the back pond.
Okay, alright.
So is that new business or old business?
Yeah, it would be, we consider it new business.
It's new business.
Because it doesn't sound like it was, the back pond, sorry, the, the back pond wasn't contemplated in your old plans that were approved, correct?
Uh, we were in the process of digging it.
But, but, but it wasn't in the plan.
It wasn't an application.
I never came to you with a lien.
Right, that, that's what we're saying.
So what I'm thinking, maybe, and I think I'm right, is this should be under new business and should not be-
Well, here it is.
-an old application that we can vote on from last month or two months ago or three months ago.
No, I didn't know how it was gonna work.
Yeah, no, that's our, it was a technical error on our part, so let me explain to you. What's gonna happen is, we're gonna listen to your proposal, and we're gonna accept your proposal, and then move on it next month, one way or the other.
That's our standard procedure, right?
That's normal.
Everybody comes through, you do it, you, you get a, you give us an application, this is gonna be a new application, which may be here, new application, we vote to accept it, we say, hey, could you include these other criteria, we're not sure of this, bring us some pictures, right?
We don't have it here.
Well, where's the surveys I got for?
No, we have you, we have your information, but- but we can't, we can't move on this tonight because we haven't accepted you. You're good, you're good with it.
Yeah, I can show it to, put it to.
We're gonna accept it. Can't approve it.
Right, we can, we have to review. We have to, we have to look at it.
Okay, talk to us, and, and what I noticed that was missing.
So I'm permitted.
Just one second. Just so, when I, when I went through your application, I didn't see any narrative that talks about what you want to do. So all we have is 20 or 30 words that describes what you want to do. I think it, one of the things I'm gonna suggest to you for our next meeting is give us a more detailed and specific plan as to what you want us to approve. In, in a narrative sense, paragraphs.
Well, I can do that for you, but I just spent $6,000 on that survey.
We have that.
And it shows you the detail, the topo, exactly where the pond is. It's already been dug. So if you want a few paragraphs.
I'm just telling you that's what I'd like to see next month, okay?
Just, it's nice because it goes into the records. And then when you come back in 10 years, it's really clear.
The building is on there also, I believe.
So I'm looking here at this, um, does everybody have this up?
I don't have a copy of it.
No, but everybody here has.
We have, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Russ.
So I'm just trying to determine, Tauriford Street, you come up here, this is a road.
So I pointed it out for you?
Well, I see the gravel driveway. This is a road that comes up here, right? This is a pond. Trying to clarify this. So we've got a pond, on this one, this is a pond.
So this is, this is Tauriford Street.
Yep, I got that.
So I've got a permit. This is Wetlands. I've got a permit to clean this pond out.
Right.
That one's been dug.
I remember this, right, yeah.
Um, and then the, the one out back is here.
That's the new one that was you dug.
Right, and that's the one Army Corps came out and looked at. And this is the building, a little square. And it's only 70 feet from the edge of the water. And Mike wanted me to.
The new ponds you created.
Right. Because it doesn't fall within your 100 feet or whatever it is.
Now, two questions. One is, what, do we have any documentation? You said Army Corps of Engineers came out because this is, this connects to?
To nothing.
Well, but no, but the, why was the Army Corps of Engineers there?
Steve Sadowski.
Okay.
Called them, thinking they would come out and hang me for dinging a pond. They gave me a clean bill of health. He has that, but mysteriously, it's not in my records. They gave me what they thought in writing.
Do you have a copy of it?
I, maybe.
Maybe it's not in your records either.
Anyway, so we've got this existing.
Well, I also had a whole box of complaints here, written complaints, that I couldn't see. So I filed the Freedom of Information Act. And when I came in, those were also not in this building.
But that, you mean from neighbors or something?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That's all I hear.
Right, but that's, yeah, no, I hear you.
Right, but they're not here, though.
Right.
My, my sense also is that somewhere back three, four years ago, that Kevin Nelligan, our attorney, became involved with your previous delinquency and filing an appropriate permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I took care of that. I got permits to clean those ponds out.
So you have your permits?
Well, you have one here in my folder.
For the front two ponds.
Right.
You have that.
So I've tried to comply.
Okay.
Yeah.
So now we're, we're limiting our, our conversation tonight to what you're asking for in this application?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is an application.
Creation of a rear pond erection of a structure? What's, what kind of structure?
It's a little cabin, uh, 24 by 20.
Do you have a location on your?
It's on the map.
It's on the map, yeah.
Okay.
You really need to look for it if you don't know it's. They didn't make it very big on that new.
It's here, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's up here, so within 70 feet, that was the issue.
And the fence forward toward the property line?
The fence would be from Tauriford. That's another thing you didn't want to let me do. Because the fence is gonna go here. And he said I was kinda encroaching on the Wetlands with the fence. So we could take care of that. And I believe that's why Mike put it on the application.
Where it is now.
Right.
This.
Do I have a gallery?
Uh, it's under farming right now, but not in the town. But I talked to them this morning. And another week or so, they're gonna come up, walk the property, and we'll be in farming. I have it through the state.
That's zoning of the state that's gonna do that?
The state I already have.
Right.
I'm waiting for the town.
Town, Winston, to determine, to classify this as a farm.
Who are you working with in the town for that?
The assessor's office.
Okay.
So they have all the paperwork. I filed it with them on October.
Well, well, let's assume you received approval on that. Will that change anything of your application?
It should change a lot of things. As far as land use and stuff like that. Changes maintenance of the pond, changes the fence line.
Okay, well, then, then we're gonna rule on what you have here. And if there's a potential that what ultimately will change this, the application that stands before us now, I'm gonna suggest that you put in a modification to this or a second application and withdraw this. You could use the contents of what you have here.
Well, once it's in farming, I can put the fence wherever I want the fence because I have land usage.
Well, then, then.
Right, okay.
Yeah, but then you, you don't need our approval for it.
No, but we, he just wouldn't leave me alone, Mike. So I went and did his survey, got his topo, cost me another six grand. And now here I am. We don't need anything.
Well, again, because you're putting in a request to have your property determined as farm land.
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just did what he wanted to do until it was farming. He didn't want me to put up a sign. He didn't want me to do this. He didn't want me to do that until it became a farm. I think you still have to have a plan for the building that you put up next to the pond. Okay, right off the bat. You know, that, that would be, once you go into farming, Steve. Once he's into farming. He's dredging the ponds, he's putting his fence in, having a farm sign. That, that building in farming.
Let him finish so I can hear it. Then you can talk.
Even in farming, it depends. It can house tools or food. Yeah, but it's proximity to the wetlands, the proximity to a pond. That's what you're here for.
Yeah.
The pond that I dug. Correct, even though you dug it.
But you created Wetlands.
I love it. All right, you created a wetland, then you put a pond, then you put a building. If you had the building, you created a wetland. Well, it's the other way around, but. If it is the other way around, God bless you. Well, the, the building was there before the pond. Was it?
But none of it was permitted.
Correct.
Then they need to then, because there wasn't a wetland then.
And it wasn't in a wetland.
But you still need a permit to dig the, if.
Dig, dig, dig the pond. Now you need a permit for that.
That's right.
That's what you need, that's what he's here for. For the pond.
All right. We're getting, we're all over the place.
I'm sorry, do you want me to come back?
No, no. What do we want, what do we want of this gentleman?
We want to accept the application.
To be aware of, so that when he comes back and we make a, a motion to approve or deny that we have everything we've asked for of him, so we can make an intelligent decision.
Well, if the building was there before, then it's only for the application of building the pond. We want to accept the application tonight for this new pond.
Creation of a rear pond.
Creation of a new pond. Correct.
Because the erection of the structure, according to the applicant, was already there, so it's not.
Creation of a pond.
It wasn't.
It's really creation, this should really read creation of rear pond.
Is, you, you intend to, to keep this structure where it is?
I would like to, yeah.
So you're not gonna.
I mean, it's, it's on ledge.
No, you're not gonna demolish it and move it somewhere else? You're gonna leave it where it is?
No, and I'm in the process of trying to get a barn permit, but I couldn't get that with, with Mike because he wanted all of this straightened out before I get the barn permit. And I've got that squared away with, with area health. But he wouldn't give me that permit until this is squared. So I had to do the topo, and I felt like I was being strong-armed.
No, so we, we, we want.
It's another $6,000.
We want to accept this if we want, accept this application.
We're gonna accept it.
Accept the application for the new pond.
Period.
Period.
That's all it should be.
That's all it should be, new pond.
Well. Yeah, unless you have a concern about the fence.
It goes under agricultural.
No. Okay.
The fence would be moved if he becomes back to us with something else.
He's not designated as agricultural right now. So we have to make.
No, but he has, he can, if we accept it, let's just get it accepted so we know it's coming for.
Yeah.
I'm agricultural through the state.
Hang on, we're trying to work this out. Go ahead.
I would think if you're agricultural through the state, you gotta fall through the town, but whatever. Let him come in. If he wants an extension, because he doesn't have his permit from the town yet for the agriculture, he can extend it.
Then you can extend, so that's true.
Yep.
Yeah.
Can I just make one suggestion, though? Since the structure was there before you built the pond, to change the language to, uh, if you guys agree, to the creation of a new pond adjacent to existing structure. And then that way, it's, it's on the record that the structure was.
That's fair, that's fair, Mike. No, but that's fair, that's fair. Anybody looks at the record, it's, it's explained.
What we're trying to do is get you to the point where down the road, everything you have and have done has been legitimatized.
Creation of a pond.
Okay, so we're trying to work with that and make it happen. Uh, but, you know, like I said, it's sort of like we're, we started out in left field where we should have been simply talking about accepting your application. Not the expectation, because it's under old business that we would vote on it. So we're not gonna vote on it, we're gonna accept it. But we'd like to change some of the language so that we know what we're accepting. And you have to change that language. So do you agree with Mary Ann's?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, so come back by April.
You're gonna come back April 15th or 19th, whatever the next regular meeting is.
Some kind of.
Yeah, and if you have.
I could pretty head in before that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great, actually, if you could submit it the week before.
And just provide a little bit of a narrative, just explaining to us what you're doing. And, um, if you're gonna become a farm, so to speak, then a lot of.
That's the idea.
A lot of this is gonna go away because of that. Okay?
So, yeah, and, and from now to then, I should have the farm status with the town.
Okay, so then my sense is that you're gonna creation of a rear pond that adjacent.
To existing structure.
To existing.
Right.
Structure.
You might as well leave the fence on there.
Because you don't know where the farm is gonna go.
Exactly.
All farm, all properties.
And forward and, and, and.
And the whole 65 acres is gonna be farm.
Okay, but again, until that happens.
Right, correct.
We can't.
So if you want to leave it on there, that's fine.
Then we'll leave it on. Okay, so you're asking for two things. The pond and the fence. Okay? And, um, we want a narrative? If you can come back the next time with your schematic so that we can look at and you can point to the commission.
I have a total, a Class A survey for the whole piece of property.
If you want to bring that and put it on an easel so you can point to something and we could see rather than you coming up.
The only thing is, I don't believe that pond is on there. I could overlay it.
Yeah, just do that. I mean, the more we see, you've been easy to, the more we see, the more it helps us understand what you're doing and how it might affect Wetlands, even though.
I don't know if it's still in my folder, but, um, that loyal scientist I had was, um, was from Canaan.
Well, if you have that information, definitely bring it, you know, I mean, anything you have. The more you bring, easier it's gonna be for.
And that Army Corps of Engineers letter.
Yeah, if I could find that.
Yeah. You might be able to.
I may be able to call him. I don't know if Mike, I believe Mike called them because I know he called DEP. And the DEP came out, and they had no bad report either.
My, my sense is that if Mike did any of these things, he would have put it into some kind of record and put it into a file. I, 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 that would be my expectation of his performance. So Lance.
Do we know if we have any of that?
We do.
Okay, so there. So what I suggest is, one day in the next few days, meet with Lance and Pam. See what's in your file, what's not in it. Try to get us a copy of it so we can give credit to what you say you have.
Yeah.
And, uh, then we can move ahead with, you know, voting on this next month.
Correct.
All right, so is there a motion to accept this application?
I'll make a motion to accept the application. Um, I WWC 23 dash three, um, for, what is the actual site? 261, 269.
Yeah, it's actually been changed since the plan.
It's 259.
For, correct, 259, Tauriford Street, uh, for the creation of a rear pond.
Adjacent?
Uh, adjacent to.
Existing structure.
To an existing structure. And are we keeping the erection, or are we keeping and, uh, a fence, uh, at forward property line?
Erection of a structure fenced toward the property line, okay? There a second?
Second.
Gary, all over in favor of acceptance? All right, unanimous, so we'll see you next month. You've got a couple of things you need to come before us with. And, uh, let's move ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
What's that?
It's not a public hearing.
What's the next one?
If, if we deem it necessary, we will. Okay?
What's the next one on the agenda?
You wanna hear what you say?
All right, let's, you want, you guys wanna talk, take it outside. Uh...
Anybody here?
You, you know, hold on, actually, we should, we should've entertained the concept of a public hearing, that's part of our responsibility. Whether there's public interest or, uh-
Where's the next scheduled meeting, is it a public meeting?
No, well, we, we should inform him that, that we made a decision that there should be a public hearing, that was a, an erroneous part on my part, not to bring that up, and I apologize. Do we, do we deem it necessary to have a public hearing?
Well, if there's people-
Well-
Yes, yes, now.
Yeah, it's got nothing to do with him. Nothing to do with him, it's our feeling.
He's coming in for, he's coming in for what's presented to us, he's coming in for a permit for an existing pond that he dug. Up to an existing structure.
Right.
And he's looking for a fence. Nothing else has been brought to us to just, they might never left anything to justify a public hearing.
There are items, uh, so, one thing that he keeps noting is, at the state level, the only thing he's qualified for is the four ninety program in farmland preservation. So that's just a tax, that's not a, that's not a classification.
In order to get into four ninety, you have to be basically clarified by the state as a farm. Yes.
The second thing is, there's no building permit for that outbuilding, so actually, we are putting a, um-
And that's a zoning-
That's zoning.
This is zoning, just so you're aware, yep.
Nothing to do with us.
That's zoning.
Earth excavation, that's zoning, that's all coming before planning and zoning.
Okay.
Um, yep, and, but the other thing that could've been noted is, the clearing of the property obviously was over a half acre, so that triggers wetlands review.
But that wasn't evident in the application.
Not in this application, but it's evident on the property.
He never had a clear meeting.
Right.
Right.
But-
I feel like this is a, I, I remember this from years ago, when I first came to the commission, that there was a lot of activity at this site.
Well, this was in two thousand and eighteen, according to-
Yeah, there, there's, it seems like it's been a problematic site.
Well, we have the opportunity to go visit the site between now and the next hearing.
Yeah, I definitely-
And if we, you know, at that point, based, based on our actual, you know, physical viewing of the site-
And Mr. Bishan did give me verbal permission to go on the site, I have never been there, to be honest.
But we, we have, we are automatically, once it becomes an application-
Once it's an application, we, we can go.
Now, can we, and I'm asking, can we, at the next meeting, determine that we want a public hearing?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, so it's not too late.
Personally, I think you should do that tonight, and I think there should be a public hearing for this one.
You can't do that after Guy's law.
He's gone.
Well, I'm gonna see him, Scott, I'm sure, tomorrow, and I, to be honest, I don't think he would.
No, I don't think, I know-
Well, whatever, we'll see what procedure.
From a commissioner's standpoint, I feel like I need to go, kinda just take a look at this site, it's a problematic place.
If we say public hearing, could we have it that night?
No, 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 you have to notice it.
If the end allows, you gotta schedule it.
Unless we determined it tonight, then he, he has a responsibility to inform-
Okay.
Newspapers and so forth.
So it goes further.
Okay. Yeah.
I think it would be important for most of commissioners to take a look at this site and see what's really going on, because there's nothing driving, right? The pond's already been dug, the building's already there, we're not, in a sense, holding somebody up here. I think i- if we looked at the site, then, then we'd have a better idea of, of some of the issues of should, should we have a, in public interest.
Reading what Mike, paragraph Mike has here, he says, "In two eighteen, the property owner created a large pound pond under rear of property by digging into an existing wetland." The property own, owner subsequently built a building adjacent to the new pond, so Mike's saying the pond, the building came on after the pond. If I read this.
And to be honest, that makes more sense, because when you look at the aerial photography, the pond started out small, and then it's just grown over time. So the, the building, I don't know when it came, but probably was.
There was a lot of, there was a lot of, uh, there was a lot of miscommunication back then, because the gentleman before us was not the owner of the property.
Yeah, that's right.
The owner was in Texas.
Oh.
And we were communicating with the owner, and things were getting done without the owner's knowledge or our permission. And until the owner got in touch with the gentleman to say, "You can't do this, because I got a letter to that effect," uh, things were gotten, were done.
But now this gentleman who's ahead of us is now, in fact, the owner of the property.
He now says he's the owner, yes. So we still retain the right to, to determine next month whether or not we want a public hearing or not.
Yeah, I, I don't think, with all due respect, I don't think we can do it without him in the room.
Okay.
And we, we-
That was an oversight.
And we can all go visit the property now, in any event, we'd be better informed about making that determination at the next meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so let's keep an open mind on that for next month, and maybe, not now, you know, in the next day, so just get back to me as to why it was listed as old business. And if it was simply a technical error, that's okay.
To be honest, I'm thinking, Pam, just because it's been an ongoing, but you're right, because it's listed as a whole new number, it is a new application.
A new application.
Yeah, okay, nice.
Say nothing in regards to that.
No, no, it's not a public hearing.
No, it's not about the public, I'm just, I'm just-
No, no, sorry, sorry, sir, this is, sorry, this is not a public hearing.
All right, we, we heard, we heard what you said before, and we're behaving appropriately.
We're not allowed to take comments.
The last meeting was canceled, so that, that made me lie, it was put on old business, because it was supposed to be on the last meeting, and that meeting got canceled. That's just a suggestion, man.
Okay, um, it's five to ten, we agreed that we weren't gonna begin anything new now.
Can I, can I, uh-
We did say ten.
Ten, that's five to ten now.
I would, actually, excuse me, Steve, I would, I would like to discuss this, or if I need to formally make a, a motion, I would, I'd like to try to extend our time a little bit this evening, so we could get into I W W C twenty-three dash five. Um, it, you know, if we can get to this next one quick, I think it seems like, you know, it, it's up to everybody, I would like to make the motion.
Yeah, let's just stay.
Can we see how we go on the next one and then make our decision, Russ?
Yeah.
Which is the next one?
Sure, sure.
Thanks. Cumberland Farms.
Cumberland Farms.
All right, um, the next application is twenty-three dash four Cumberland Farms, and the applicant is Guy Jenny, DeJenny? Is he here? That may be easy.
Let's just want to accept it.
Well, we gotta look, right, I mean-
What do you gotta look at for it?
No, no, if they're not here, we can move them further back on the agenda, which we normally do, and then the, the next application will be heard.
Yeah.
Is anybody here from Cumberland Farms? Lance, you wanna just check out in the hall?
Yeah, I kinda doubt it.
Oh, well, I just, you know. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, if they're not here, then we'll move Cumberland Farms further back on old, on, again, this should not be old business either.
It's under new business.
No, it's not.
No, it should be under new business, yeah.
Yeah, that's appropriate to move it.
Uh, okay, just, again, for clarification, uh, Cumberland Farms is listed as old business also, and this is-
And that shouldn't have been.
Right.
That's correct.
So this is new business?
That is new business.
Okay, so this is new business. Okay, uh, the next application is twenty-three dash five, the application, applicant is Charles A. Morinieri Boros, and the address is two fifty-seven Colbrook Road, and it's a partial reconstruction of a residence. Identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm, uh, Charles Morinieri Boros, and, uh, for the record, I would like to apologize for my outburst earlier.
And actually, for the record also, uh, I got into that banter, and, and I, I apologize for that, you know, you, somebody sees-
Larry, we're all sorry, let's move ahead.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
Matt Davidson, for the record, I, I wasn't involved with this, this is a young couple, they were upset, I was here already, so I'm just gonna listen to them, and if I can help them, I'm gonna offer to help them, so.
I don't know if you can.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
You can listen, but I don't know if you can help.
Okay.
Okay, please.
Okay, so, uh- So, basically, um, I was doing repairs on my house, and, uh, I believe it got reclassified, or classified as a reconstruction, so, uh, no, I'm not really sure why I'm here, because there was no change to the footprint of the house, uh, there was no soil moved whatsoever. Um, literally, the only thing I did was remove a rotted portion of the house and rebuild it exactly the same way on the existing foundation. There were no changes in terms of footprint, foundation, um, anything that would require me to be here.
Well, that, that amount of construction you just described would generally need to go to zoning.
I, uh, came to that conclusion after I tore down the house, and, uh, I've recently gone through to get my building permits, which this is currently the only holdup.
Right, okay. Usually you have to, yeah, go through, if you're in a wetlands area.
Now-
Lance asked me to, to get some pictures of the footing.
Now, this is a new application also?
Yes.
Uh, I believe so, yeah.
It's a new application.
Yes, sir.
So the procedure normally would be, we accept your application, you have permission to do nothing.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
I have not moved forward at all.
Again, you would have to wait till we approve or disapprove of it next month.
Right, I completely understand.
Okay, the only option would be, to be generous, is that if we have an agent determination, because there's really very little wetlands impact, it's not near the lake, it's not near a body of water.
Well, it's near a stream, yeah, it's, Colebrook, uh, Colebrook Brook runs through the property adjacent to the house.
How far are you?
Um, about thirty-five feet, forty feet from the house.
Very close.
Then we can't do a, an agent determination, though, okay, so we're gonna list-
Well, I mean, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the footage, the, the, the site map.
But it's not a hundred-
Well, there's a survey.
Yeah. Okay, tell us what you wanna do.
Um, fix my house.
You just said you tore it down.
Well, that's, well, okay, so I tore down, uh, exactly one-fifth of it, um, which, funnily enough, uh, exactly one-fifth of it, which the roof had been damaged on, and there was water infi- infiltration over the course of the thirty so, or so years that the property was abandoned, uh, so the structure was completely, essentially nonexistent. It was there, but not usable in any way, shape, or form, and, uh, at that point in time, I was under the impression that because it constituted less than twenty-five percent of the property, or the, the house, that I was able to repair that myself without needing any paperwork or permits or anything along that line. Uh, I recently came, or, not recently, I found out that that wasn't the case, and I have been trying to move forward correctly, um, to, you know, be able to have a place to live.
Are you currently occupying the house?
Yes, I am.
And the part that's leaking?
Uh, the entire, the entire thing is leaking, the house was abandoned for thirty years. The roof, the roof is the most pressing thing, yeah.
The discussion I had with you in the hallway was, I didn't, and I don't know the link between building department, but it didn't sound like an issue that the Wetland Commission would have much, I didn't think the Wetland Commission would have much of an issue with them repairing the roof while the rest of this goes forward. It, it, without any soil.
That's, that's really my main concern, is I'd like to have a roof that doesn't leak, and, you know, a house that I can actually live in safely.
So you're not gonna address the rot?
No, that's already been addressed, that's, that's been taken down, and I rebuilt it, and this is why I'm here, is because the town, uh, informed me that I wasn't allowed to do that, and so I'm here retroactively, I guess you should say.
Where are you with the building department right now?
Uh, here.
So the building department-
I have my, my, well, as far as I know-
Okay, so, actually, I'd like to hear from you a little bit about where you stand from a building perspective.
Yeah, so, the good news, our new building, assistant building official, from what, saw from the photos that were taken, gosh, last fall, I think, right? Said, Charles, you're the one who did the work, right?
Mm-hmm.
Bill said he thought you knew what you were doing.
I, I renovated houses for about ten years down in-
That's a very good sign.
Down in Roxbury and Bridgewater.
So the problem is, because this is within a regulated area from the water course, it never had a chance for wetlands to see what was gonna happen with the removal of the property. That's why I'm here before you guys know. Uh, if it's on the existing footings, like you're stating, then honestly, there shouldn't be any negative impact to the wetlands that are on the prop, the, the water course on the property, and you should be able to move forward for building permit, for the addition that you already did, and for a new roof.
Well, here's the thing, though, it's not an addition, that, that, I just, I gotta make sure, because that keeps on getting thrown around a lot, it's not an addition, it is an exist, it was a repair to the existing structure.
Correct.
Um, where was I gonna go?
But no permits, so that was, that's what was the trigger.
Um, but, the thing is, like, last year, I went and applied for a roofing and a building permit, and my checks were cashed, but I never received any paperwork for it, and I was under my, I was, I'm under the impression that if the permit isn't approved, the cash doesn't, or the, the check doesn't get cashed. So if the permits weren't approved, how come my check kept, my checks were cashed, and where's the paperwork to prove that I indeed have the permits that I paid for?
Is there building permit now?
No. And I'm not aware of that, so thank you.
Well, I, I told that to Mr. Stankov last year, when I was given the cease and desist. I had, I had gone forward with the permits before the town got involved, and I feel that it was because I went to go get the permits that somehow, for some reason, this blew up into this, into this situation.
You put in a permit application and paid a permit application fee, but you never came before a board?
No. And, and I have, I have receipt, for the building permit, yeah, um, I, I, I have evidence that the cash, that the checks were cashed, I know that, the money's not in my account, so I know that the permit, that the money for the permits was, was taken, but I've, ever since then, I think that was in September of last year, um, ever since then, I haven't been able to move forward with the house.
Did you submit plans with your permit application?
There were no plans, because I wasn't making any changes, I'm not making any changes to the property.
He did mention that he has an A T survey with the Wetland Commission, is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Yep.
But if the A T survey he's got has all afforded to the house, it's changed for the house, correct?
And- There's, yes, and there's also, um, the original, there, nothing has changed at all, there's also the original, um, tax document showing the footprint of the house, and that hasn't changed either.
Where are we, well, basically, what we're looking at is, is, far enough that's our level.
Well, we could-
My opinion is let him go finish his house, he hasn't, he hasn't come into the wetlands any.
I know, but, you know, the protocol normally is we accept the first month, and unless we detect, we, we deem that it can be an agent determination.
Well, can I, can I, may I interject really quick?
Just hang on one second.
There's no, nothing being done here to wetlands itself, you can't put a roof.
No, I understand.
And I'd also, I would also like to point out that the house was constructed in nineteen, I would also like to point out that the house was constructed in nineteen sixty-four, before the Wetlands Commission even existed.
That's not a significant.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, the house is, the house was, has been there for over forty years, fifty years.
We're just trying to figure out a way to accomplish what you need to accomplish.
And I, trust me, when I say that, I wanna do that, too.
Under the circumstances, that's, you know, where we're coming from.
And what I explained was the most important thing is that you're not disturbing the ground.
Right, and that's important, yes.
And I also have, um, Lance told me to bring these in, just in case, I have pictures of the footings of the, of, of the house, um, if you'd like to see them. I mean, it's pretty evident that they're, it's pretty evident that they're-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, please.
But I know this property, I don't drive enough to see what it is. Coconut Brook? Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's, you go down the slope, and it's just-
I do apologize about the black, yes, I do have-
There's a little bridge, there's a little bridge or something across the river, and then you, and you go up there, and it's a little structure kind of in the woods down.
Yes, sir. Yep. And I do apologize about the black and white, that was the only printer I had access to.
So right now, all you're asking for us is a roof.
Yeah, essentially.
You're not talking about the walls, that, you deal with that illegally already.
Yes.
You did it all.
Long story short.
Right?
Inadvertently, yes.
Yeah, without a permit, without a term.
Yes.
Except in-
In, are we, are we comfortable referring this to an agent, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, to an agent determination, that you would be the agent?
That's okay.
I would be the agent.
Yes.
Yeah, so, that just means, Charles, that I would be allowed to come on the property.
Okay.
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 Does that mean he gets his permit?
Well, let's just-
Well, it's an agent determination, to put it up on the site.
Oh, then, then he would determine what has to be done, and how he does it.
Well, right on site, tomorrow. Okay.
And I know you have a crazy work schedule, so I would work with you totally around that, and if you don't mind, I'd like to bring William Bill at the same time, just so we can double duty and get you ready for your building permit.
All right. Whatever I need to do to have a place to live, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I appreciate you following through, this is what we were waiting for, and I really appreciate this is now in your file, so thank you.
Are we comfortable with the motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mary Anne? Yes?
I'll make a motion, uh, on application I W W C twenty-three dash five, Charles A. Morinier Boros, did I say that right?
Very close.
Two fifty-seven Colbrook Road, a partial reconstruction of existing residence due to rot slash neglect, it sounds like water damage.
Yes, um, a tree had fallen on the roof and never got repaired over the course of thirty years.
Okay.
Can, can I just add that we're gonna limit this, this agent determination to the, to a roof only?
Okay.
Yep.
Limited to, limited to a new roof, or a, a, a new roof.
Yeah, because you guys zoning and building department's gonna deal with the rest, right?
That's, that's fine, that's all I wanted to begin with.
Okay. Uh, so we're gonna refer the, the roof portion, the reconstruction of the roof portion of this permit application to an agent determination.
All right, so we're gonna accept it?
Right.
And then refer it to, for an agent determination?
But we need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, second is Russ, all those in favor of moving ahead with the motion? It's unanimous.
Yeah.
Okay, meet with Lance tomorrow, next day, the next day, the next day, whenever you want.
Do you want me to hand that to your file?
Um, if you'd like.
Yeah.
My sense is, my sense is I don't think we need a bond.
No, not in this case, no.
Okay, there's no disturbance to anything other than, okay, and the debris that's coming off the roof?
Um, well, currently, yes, there's, uh, you know, rotting shingles that are falling off, but, uh, I do have a silt fence put up underneath the prop, underneath the, the line, if you look on the, if you look on the site map, uh, just along the walkway, uh, on the downhill side, I have a silt fence put up.
Okay, and the removal of that?
Uh, removal of, oh, of the material, um, probably gonna be myself at the town dump.
So there's no storage, or it'll be taken off and removed?
No, none of them are sorted. Yes, sir.
Don't throw it in the river.
Yeah, no, uh, tell that to my neighbors.
All right, Lance, all right, um-
Do me a favor?
What?
Okay, um, at this point, we're ten after ten.
Could you do one more?
No. We've got one more, and one more, and one more, we'll be here all day.
On my block.
Thank you very much, guys, for pushing this forward, I very much appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Frank, go ahead, what do you want?
Uh, twenty-three, I, I kept it twenty-three, 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 three?
Was it next in line? I have to stick to-
We just did twenty-three, three.
We just did twenty-three, three.
And twenty-three, four got mu- pushed to new business.
This is twenty-three dash six.
Which would be our next.
That's new business.
That's under new business.
Is that yours?
Clearing stump from boulder.
Your stump's under the snow right now, though.
You know what, my preference is to leave all the new business to the next meeting, it really is. You know what, my preference is to leave all the new business to the next meeting, it really is. Uh, it's gonna be in two weeks. And, you know, if we, if we do one more, we're gonna do one more, and then one more, and then one more, and it's not fair to anybody sitting at the bottom of the pile. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, let's just, uh, you know, stick to the terms of the meeting that we, we just, we established.
Which we did, in my respect, if you're.
And, uh. All right, um, so for the next meeting, Lance, we're gonna begin with uh, Cumberland Farms, which will be new business.
Now true business, yeah.
Okay? Uh, and we'll have two, the public hearing for twenty-three dash two, Pizano. And Borgesi is on the agenda, but that's going to April, and Pizano is going to April, so those two will not be on the special meeting.
I think that's smart.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll begin with, uh, I think, new business.
Okay.
Okay? And then agent determinations and everything else will follow. So we'll, we'll finish the meeting. So we're in agreement that the meeting will be on April fifth. It'll be a special meeting, so nothing can be added or changed to the agenda. And, uh, beginning time? Seven o'clock? Stay with the seven o'clock time? Good? Good, Frank?
Yes.
Good. Okay, uh, anything else? I'm sorry?
What happens with work schedules if we're not here?
We're gonna accept your application based on what you presented to us. And then at that point, we'll try to give somewhat representative of yours, if they're here, uh, some kind of, uh, information as to what we'd like to see or not see, and then move ahead, and I, I apologize, but, you know, in fairness to Mr. Bates and everybody else down the, down the, down the chain, um, it, it's just, it's just the way it's gonna be. Okay? Okay, thank you very much, I'm sorry you sat through the meeting and weren't, uh, recognized for, uh, an input, but we'll go from there. And give a motion to postpone the meeting?
Sure, I'll make.
Carrie?
I'll make a motion to, uh,
Let's work.
We're still on here, make a motion to, uh, to adjourn meeting.
For you adjourn, I just have one thing we have to add.
Okay, yeah, yeah, let's go.
Sorry, if we're not gonna do it tonight, we're just solely fine. The codification project, I believe Michael had started with you guys.
It's on the agenda for now?
It was on the agenda for today.
So it'll still be on the agenda?
If we can do it for the fifth, because that one needs a public hearing by the nineteenth.
Okay. So. You know what, tomorrow, or the next day, I'll sit down with you and Pam.
Okay.
And let's just go over what the agenda is gonna look like, and what's gonna be on it, what's not gonna be on it.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll do it, okay?
Yep.
Right? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'll make a motion to adjourn, uh, tonight's meeting.
Second?
We have second.
Second.
Who goes in favor? Unanimous. Hi, thank you.
So we'll go over, and our next meeting, we'll go over all these determinations.
Yeah. Sure. Go ahead, talk.
Right.
I forgot.
Winchester. All right, we'll edit that for next time, thank you.
Right, so I wanna make sure.
Sometimes we can accept and approve, depends on the application.
Yours is a modification, right?
Yeah.
So a modification, we can accept and approve.
Yeah, we'll get it correct for next time.
Okay, so.
We can actually accept and approve a new one too.
What I'm getting is, I didn't include pictures, should I get pictures?
Yeah, I'm gonna do the whole of the map.
The more you give us, the better off we are. Only before, there's some documentation from his previous application, then there was a modification to that, and there was some resistance to be accurate on the part of your.
The only thing that could be done.